Planning Commission meeting for January 11th, 2016. It is 2016.
Yes.
Call to order. And happy new year to all of you. First item would be public comments not on the agenda, and I have a card from Betty Mum.
Hello.
Good evening.
Betty Mum, Oregon City. I just had a couple of comments. I have been following you guys on Greenwichus. And just a couple of comments. Some of you are very soft-smoking, so it'd be really nice if you speak into your mics really clearly. I had to rewind a couple of times just to figure out what you were saying. And kinda if you're gonna let, I don't know what your rules are, do you just let people go on until they're done talking? Do you let them just go for 10 minutes, 5 minutes, 3 minutes? Kinda make that consistent, because I know that's not been consistent with you guys.
Are you talking about public comment?
Public comment. Well, even comments on like the two agenda items you have this evening. So what is your kind of rule that you guys go by?
Public comment, we typically allow five minutes for representatives of the community associations and three minutes for the general public.
Okay, I think that's good, as long as you're just consistent with it. I'd appreciate that.
But you allow it to go a little bit longer if they're finishing up their comments.
We have the latitude as a commission to...
You're absolutely correct, you do. Yeah, but it's only fair that you hear the same amount of time from me as you do everybody else.
We try to be fair.
And typically, we go with that unless we have questions for the person.
And the only reason why I say anything is because I have been in your seats on that side, and it is easy to not think about the pins that you're clicking and that kind of thing, and you're soft-spoken, and you have to, you know, people are really listening to what you're, what you guys are saying, and we really need to hear what you're saying and what your decisions are and how you got there. So you've got a couple of really good items tonight, and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. So the first item on our agenda tonight is the readoption of the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, PC 15-251, planning file LE 15-03. We have a staff report. Is that the, is that gonna be this big one right here?
No, that's...
Something different.
It's this.
Yeah, okay. Thank you Chair Kidwell, and good evening Planning Commissioners. Happy new year to y'all and to the audience. This is the third public hearing for Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan readoption. This item was continued twice. The last public hearing that we had that we really got into discussion about this was November 23rd. So what I'm gonna do tonight is recap some of those issues for you. What we've done is prepare a set of revised findings and revised staff report, which was part of your packet. We also put together what's called an Issues Matrix, which is a table, a two-page table, where we attempted to summarize and respond to all of the public comments and Planning Commission comments that we heard at the November 23rd hearing, and it's taken some time to do that. But we feel that we've wrapped up a lot of those, those issues in a way that is a little more easy for you to understand. So those issues are presented in that table. I am gonna go through those tonight. In the record already, we've presented once with respect to how the concept plan complies with our comprehensive plan, with Metro Title 11, with Metro Title 4, and with the statewide planning goals and requirements. We have some new exhibits, the two that I've mentioned already, the revised findings and the Issues Matrix. Also in your electronic packet is a letter from John Collins, the South Fork Water Board Not Chair, General Manager. And a couple of emails from Clackamas County staff with respect to items that are discussion points tonight. One from Karen Bierig with respect to transportation issues, in particular, the city's need to work on alternative mobility targets for transportation. And an item that I neglected to attach to the record, but it's an email from Linda Price with respect to historical resources within the concept plan area. And I sent Linda, she's a staff planner at Clackamas County that works on cultural and historical resources, and I asked her to quickly look on the, at the map that we had presented. We did Goal 5 findings for resources when we initially adopted the plan. There were no historical resources listed for the concept plan area. And the email that is in your record here talks about the historical properties that she was able to find that are not in the concept plan area, they're south of the concept plan area. However, there's a finding that we've revised in our staff report with respect to historic and cultural resources. Essentially, if any are found during any point in the development or annexation review process or anything like that, Oregon City does have a process in our historic overlay district whereby historic and cultural resources that meet the criteria for designation with owner consent can be added to our overlay district and regulated as a historic resource. So there are already code provisions that address that in our, in our code, and as properties are annexed into Oregon City and fall under our ordinance, those protections will be put in place. Additionally to that, we have some public comments, a set of emails from Mr. Paul Edgar with respect to transportation and coordination of transportation with ODOT and Clackamas County, particularly with respect to the 213 Beaver Creek Corridor and the intersection. A letter from Christine Kozinski that was presented to you on December 14th, that was submitted since November 23rd, dealing with landslide hazards and other things. And then most recently, in addition to some, some of the most very recent emails, we have a letter from the Hamlet of Beaver Creek dated the 6th of December. Some of the attachments to that letter are already part of the record. They have to do with water supply concerns and with respect to a prior ordinance that dealt with a grade-separated interchange at Beaver Creek and 213, as well as some general concerns that the Hamlet of Beaver Creek has outlined before to you, and I'm gonna address some of those tonight. Additionally, for the record, I'm submitting a letter from James Nacita, which is a four-page letter that we will need to talk about tonight, commenting on the readoption. And I think that's it for now. I'm sure there'll be some other comments coming in. So as I mentioned, we tried to summarize some of those outstanding issues, and in the matrix, the left-hand column illustrates what those topic areas are. There are job creation, citizen involvement, need for additional industrial land in the plan area beyond what is proposed, 213 Beaver Creek Transportation Corridor and Capacity, a requirement or request to include Goal 6 findings for air and water quality in accordance with Oregon Administrative Rules, landslides, slope and slide insurance concerns, water supply, pressure, jurisdiction, and reservoirs, sewer system capacity and connections, and as I mentioned, Goal 5 cultural and historical resources. First item being job creation. The concern is that the plan does not provide for cottage industries, that there needs to be reconsideration of greater cottage manufacturing in residential zones, including potentially issues of live work and home occupations. So our response to that is that adoption of the concept plan itself does not preclude the provision of cottage manufacturing or a greater variety of home occupations. These are properly part of a zoning implementation phase that would occur as a separate legislative public process once this plan is adopted. Concept plan is not a land use regulatory document until it's been implemented through zoning, so. Citizen involvement, we went back through and looked pretty hard at this one because there were concerns that the CIC was not representative of all citizens, a statement that two seats on the CAC were unfilled by citizens, instead were filled by developers and officials. There was a concern that the plan is not relevant since it's over 10 years since it was initially drafted, and a claim of strong public opposition to the plan. Looking back through the public comment process for this plan, it's clear that the CAC membership roster indicated good participation from county and city's residents. The CAC had several, up to 12 meetings, I believe, showing strong input from those stakeholders, those residents and county residents, and also from audience members during those CAC meetings. So I did not find a lack of participation. Sometimes it is difficult to fill all positions on a citizen advisory committee during a long-range planning process. As we've seen in general, people are great at showing up and participating, and I don't feel like this plan was any exception. Also, the outreach and response from the majority of citizen groups that we've heard of has been largely positive and supportive for the readoption process, in my opinion. And that is outlined in our findings under the Citizen 1, under the Goal 1 findings. So the recommendation with respect to this goal is to continue to seek public input and provide public outreach to address implementation of the plan when we do future land use processes, including zoning, alternative mobility targets, green building, and other core values that are identified by the citizen advisory committee during the plan process, and we need to refer back to those issues in subsequent land use processes, including annexation, zoning, and development review. Next concern was the need to include additional industrial land. Part of the original UGB expansion for purely industrial land, we know from our prior discussions and from our finding, that the Metro Title 4 industrial land needs were revised and amended and found to be adequate by Metro, and the 127 net acres that we talk about in the staff report is sufficient to meet Metro and city objectives for employment land. So our recommendation is to acknowledge those findings regarding Title 4 and Metro's letter with respect to this, it's already in the record. And we will look at the way our zoning codes protect and preserve industrial lands when they are reviewed. I talk in great detail in the staff report about the campus industrial zone and how, when we adopt a zone to implement the concept plan, it will look very similar to or be slightly revised to be, to properly protect Title 4 industrial lands. And we'll talk about that. With respect to the very important issue of transportation, we all use this transportation system, city and county residents. And it is a huge concern that it functions adequately in the timeframe of the transportation system plan. So the specific statement here was that there was a requirement for a grade-separated interchange according to a prior ordinance. That was, that project was replaced and superseded in 2013 with the new transportation system plan update, wherein we acknowledge the congestion situation at that interchange. We've got code that governs existing zoned land within the city. However, we also need to address future zoning within the concept plan areas and areas that are rezoned. And the way that we do that is through our code, but we also have to address the development of alternative mobility measures that would set new standards for congestion, which would be adopted before any zone change that would allow trip generation to exceed current zoning can be permitted. And the funding mechanisms that have been initially identified in the concept plan as well have been addressed in both the transportation system plan and through the updates to that plan, and we will be implementing that as we go forward. The concept plan is the first step in solving the transportation problem. We may need to do future studies for corridors, not Beaver Creek Road, but more detailed engineering studies for the local streets and, or sorry, arterial roads within the concept plan area such as the Myers Road Interchange that we're already studying through a corridor planning process, are further refined following concept plan adoption. So the recommendation here is to develop a refinement plan, which is discussed already in our transportation system plan, and work with ODOT and Clackamas County to draft and adopt alternative mobility targets. With respect to air and water quality, concern was that the city needs to address other aspects of Oregon Administrative Rule 660-15, specifically subsection 6, and also waste and process discharges, and there was a specific entry with respect to these requirements following a North Plains Luba appeal. In the revised findings, we talk about our stormwater and erosion control standards, which are in compliance with the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System and MS-4 permit requirements the city holds, and our response is that the Goal 6 is satisfied where there is a reasonable expectation that uses will be able to comply with state and federal environmental regulations. This is not a concept planning area typically, it's not something that we address for compliance with Metro Title 11 or Title 4, but it is something we address through the development review process and through our, through our other standards, including engineering standards and building code standards. So our recommendation here is that there be no further action. Our acknowledged land use regulations and public work standards are in place and ongoing. With respect to landslide and slope risk, we have a geologic hazard overlay district which sets up a 200-foot review perimeter from any known landslide area and a 50-foot review area from any slope greater than 25 percent. And within that overlay district, both development and standards for development are more stringent. There are construction standards, additional engineering requirements required for peer review, and that code was initially updated 2008 and then again updated in 2010 to include that greater boundary next to landslide areas of 200, 200 feet. So amendments to that code to regulate steep slopes differently or to exclude projects from the city's TSP are beyond the concept plan readoption. If the Planning Commission wishes to discuss this in more detail, we'd be happy to, but it is a zoning code and implementation item. Second item, oh sorry, the third bullet on the left here, it talks about amending the transportation system plan to remove Holly Lane, and this is ostensibly because of slide concerns or landslide concerns and that sort of thing. And our, our response to that is that these concept transportation networks are conceptual. They are subject to much, for much greater engineering. There is one location in the concept plan area where the Holly Lane extension touches the edge of Trimble Creek, which starts to get kinda sloped. So that would be cause for greater concern and, and review for any public improvement in that area. We don't show any areas within the steep slope overlay zone as being, you know, suitable for residential or commercial use with habitable buildings, and we talked about that in our findings. Such public facilities, stormwater discharge points, pipes, utilities, other things that are structures that may need to be located down slope in these areas would be subject to those additional standards as well when any development review is proposed. But we feel like the code adequately reviews and protects against development in those Water supply, pressure, and jurisdiction. So there are several items to touch on here. One is that the concern that there was inadequate supply and pressure. So as development comes onboard, we need to be sure that the concept plan, which provided the initial planning for this area and the water master plan for this area, is followed and that our development review standards for water pressure are being followed. We do have agreements throughout the city with Clackamas River Water, but those agreements recognize that in areas which are ultimately gonna be in the city, the city will be the ultimate water provider, and we have made a finding that adequate water facilities and services can be made available in this area concurrent with development. Our water provider is South Fork Water Board. They have submitted a letter stating that there's sufficient water in their plan to serve the area. That is in the record today. Water facilities do have to supply pressure in compliance with our water distribution system design standards for both fire flow protection and domestic water service. And as development occurs in the concept plan area, the city's water distribution is extended. CRW would withdraw from serving those areas as they come online in the city and transfer service to the city. It's not a, it's not a fast process, but it does happen. Water service to the development would then be fully from the Oregon City Water Distribution, and that is in compliance with our water master plan. Our recommendations with respect to conservation of water, we have several partners such as Tri-City Service District, South Fork Water Board, and others, and they all promote water conservation and have adopted water conservation measures and public education with respect to those measures. They are not mandatory, but they are, they're voluntary, and they provide education to the public with respect to ways to conserve water use. Concern that funding mechanism for water reservoirs, which are identified in our water master plan, has not been identified. The planning that has been done through the water master plan update in 2010 and any subsequent planning that will be done from here on must look at how those, how those facilities are gonna be paid for, whether it's through system development charges, development-funded improvements, and reimbursement districts. Those three methods are the principal methods that we anticipate that water system improvements, particularly reservoirs, will be funded. We will continue to explore funding alternatives as those development proposals come forward, and we will continue to plan and budget for construction of water master plan capital improvements, including those identified for the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan area, utilizing the mechanisms I mentioned. So we don't make any further recommendation in that regard. We have policies in place, and they are ongoing. With respect to the sewer system capacity and connections, there were several concerns with respect to cross-basin connections, cross-basins which ostensibly violate the sewer master plan, not the water master plan, sewer master plan, and potential for contamination and those sorts of things. There was also concern for taking capacity away from existing basins. When the sewer master plan was adopted and during the review process for that, there was a separate appendix done for the Glen Oak Road. City engineer looked at this in more detail, and there was a conclusion of recommendations for an overall recommendation to convey flow from Beaver Creek Road sewer area through a new sewer extension constructed in Beaver Creek Road. That is, that is the plan. This analysis also provides a routing scenario to convey a portion of the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan area, which was under review as an apartment area that was already within the city, as an interim alternative until that sewer system is constructed down Beaver Creek Road. And with that, appendix and the findings that were made for approval of that development was found to be in compliance with the sewer master plan. That went to, that development went to Luba, and Luba did not disagree with the city on this one. Therefore, the cross-basin connection previously proved does not violate the sewer master plan, and that decision is not before the city. So we don't have any recommendation in that regard. The policy is in place, and it's ongoing. So with respect to how we move forward, there's several things that need to happen. They're bulleted here. And I'm gonna ask our transportation consultant to address any questions you have with respect to the first one. Alternative mobility targets for ODOT intersections need to be addressed prior to any rezoning. So we have to move forward as staff with our partners, Clackamas County and ODOT, to draft what are called alternative mobility targets for our intersections within the city that are ODOT intersections. They include a variety of potential measures to address safety and signage, as well as pedestrian and bicycle improvements, not only in those intersection areas, but in other parts of our city as well. We also need to, the next item is to put in place comprehensive plan designations to implement the concept plan, then do zoning code amendments to implement the concept plan, and those will be achieved through separate legislative process. Annexation and zoning of property will be owner-initiated when conditions are suitable. And in conclusion, what we've done is attempt to show through the Issues Matrix and the revised findings and the additional testimony that all the concerns have been addressed. And as we've shown, additional steps are needed. However, plan adoption is the first step. This is not something that is gonna happen quickly. Full development of this area is not anticipated to occur until our most recently adopted plan that looks at this area is the Transportation System Plan, which sets out at 2035 for the entire city. We will be looking at how quickly the area develops as we move forward, and I'm sure we will be doing amendments to our public facilities plans in the future as well. Our recommendation therefore is that the Planning Commission find that LE 1503, the readoption of the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan and appendices, meets the requirements of the statewide land use goals, Metro Title 11, Metro Title 4, as well as the applicable comprehensive plan criteria. And we request that the Planning Commission forward the file to the city commission with a recommendation of approval with the implementation steps outlined by staff and as discussed in the plan. Thank you.
Chair Kidwell, if I could just add one more quick thing. Pete, would you mind going to the first slide with the East and West? Pete, would you mind going to the first slide with the east and west and the zoning on the, or the comp plan designations on the property?
This one?
Yes.
Okay.
So you have a letter dated today from Mr. Nocita concerning cottage manufacturing in the mixed west use neighborhood and east mixed use neighborhood of the concept plan. So this is the yellow areas on the south side of the proposed concept plan, which we had discussed briefly, you know, the desire for additional, what's being called cottage manufacturing. And if you may recall, we had a discussion about our home occupation, the way it's currently written doesn't allow for the manufacturing, direct sales from your home, essentially customers coming to your home, or, you know, manufacturing things at your house. And so what we had proposed to do was to address that as part of the implementing zoning. In Mr. Nocita's letter, there's some, you know, it states that the commission provided a directive to staff at the July 20, 2011 meeting to add cottage manufacturing to the west mixed use neighborhood and the east mixed use neighborhood. Goes on on the second, and bottom of the second, top of the third page, to lay out the concerns about why addressing it during the zoning would not accomplish what, allowing manufacturing in those residential areas. And then proposes adding the two words cottage housing, I believe that's supposed to be cottage manufacturing, to the description of those, of those districts. Well, I went back and watched the July 20, 2011 meeting. There was discussion about cottage manufacturing. It's a mix of residential employment versus a need for more small scale manufacturing, home occupation not allowing enough commercial industrial manufacturing uses, that this should be a laboratory to try to create a zone that allowed, that wasn't your typical zoning district, that, you know, really started to separate by use and tried to incorporate more what we typically look at as incompatible uses into one zone. Essentially, the motion was to reconsider the yellow areas for greater cottage manufacturing. That was the actual motion. So I just want you to think about, you know, what you've seen in the, in the proposal. Do we add additional cottage manufacturing? You know, we're not at a position of writing the code right now. So that's why we had proposed addressing this during the zoning code. Now, if you'd like to add cottage manufacturing is something that we should consider or that you want outright in those residential areas, you could do that at this stage. Or you could rely on what staff said, try to address this during zoning, provide some clarification now. Essentially, I want you to be comfortable making a determination that you have reconsidered this. I, I thought that we had discussed this and brought this forward concerning the incompatibility of manufacturing and residential, and that we would address it at zoning. But it's been brought up again, so just want to make sure we're, we're clear that you're comfortable that we've addressed this.
I think we want to at least put bookends on it during this stage of the process so that when you do get to the zoning aspect, you can, you can at least have an idea of a ballpark of where you wanted to be with how much of that type of zone you wanted.
All right. And I think, you know, one of the other points was to reduce the zone, reduce the density and increase the manufacturing. So, you know, I think, you know, having guidance and a recommendation from the commission would be very helpful in addressing that.
Quick question for you, Tony. He's pretty much addressed the cottage industry in this, but there was more to this right in this document than he's addressing than just cottage. Again, this just came tonight, so I've been reading about state water quality and all that. Asked questions about that later, but I was a little confused by some of the, what was on here. And it wasn't just all about cottage, right? This document that he sent?
He's just talking about cottage.
You're just talking about cottage.
I, I was just addressing the cottage manufacturing part of that.
Okay, so we can ask questions about that later.
Correct.
Thanks.
Seems to me, Tony, that if we address the cottage industry at the zoning, you're involved in a quasi judicial process, which would give it more impact as opposed to just mentioning at this stage, which is just conceptual. You don't have any specifications now, but in the zoning you would. Am I correct?
Yeah, yeah, I guess there's two, yeah, I mean, you know, we're going to come back with a legislative process to adopt actual implementing zoning, which is going to say for the west mixed use neighborhood, here's the permitted uses, conditional uses, et cetera, et cetera, whatever that, whatever that looks like. Could some direction right now, there's, you know, it's, I think the concern was that it's not clear that cottage manufacturing should be allowed, shouldn't be allowed in, in those residential zones. I think that's part of the concern. And Mr. Nocita's obviously here tonight and can probably answer some of your questions better than I can as to some of the intent and concerns of the original motion.
What if you were to have a certain percentage of the residential zones consisting of, of the cottage industry zoning?
Well, once again, is that something that we should just?
Yeah.
How do we do that?
But I mean, at this stage of the process, and then you could look back on that when you're doing the rezone, but then I guess that would take a little bit of accounting to keep track of all the zone changes that you're making to make sure that you weren't exceeding the percentages or whatever, but I don't know. Either way, I guess it's fine.
What's the demand for the cottage industry anyway? I mean, we're talking rhetorically right now. Is there an actual demand for that? Do we know?
I don't have the answer to that.
I think, I think, Bob, what the, what the concern is, is that we are possibly precluding it. And I guess where I'm falling on this, because I, I probably raised some of the concerns, is that there's sort of two options. If we're talking about how that provision, whatever it might be, pertains to specifically the Beaver Creek Road master plan, that's one thing. If this is a provision we're talking about that might apply to the rest of the city of Oregon City, then I would have major concerns about that. The devil's in the details is what, is what this is. So, you know, you can have the nicest person living next to you, but, you know, let's say that they're a woodworker and all of a sudden you hear that, you know, going on and, but again, if you were moving in there, maybe you would be aware of that. But you know how people are, they don't always pay attention to what the rules and regulations are where they live, so they get next door to the woodworker guy and, you know, but I, I think it's, I think it's something, I'm comfortable with it, with it being looked at a little bit down the road, because I don't think we're in a position right now to kind of craft that or to even say, this is what we think it is. I think there's a little bit more research that needs to be done on it, because I know that there are some other communities that may be doing this or attempting to do it. And I think having the benefit of other people's processes would be helpful to us to know what that is, but I don't know if that, we can't do that right now. But I think you can look at it down the road.
I think we're getting a little into council or commission discussion at this point. It would be, I think, best if we take public testimony and hear the public testimony before we start weighing in with.
I think, and I, and I agree, I think there's probably going to be multiple issues that are going to need to be clarified. I just wanted to point this one out, because this just came in and, you know, we're going back four and a half years of, you know, and I, I just wanted to clarify that we're not ignoring this motion. I don't interpret it the same way, that it was a mandate to put manufacturing in there. It was to reconsider it, and that's what we're, I'm trying to clarify that the commission is reconsidering that, and whatever you're comfortable with, we will bring forward as a recommendation.
Okay. Are there any other questions for staff or for Tony at this time before we go to public testimony?
I do. I just wanted a clarification from Carrie. When we started this process, it seems like it's been months ago again, there was a notation that this is a readoption of the Beaver Creek Road concept plan, and we were only going to, we're not going to review the whole plan again, that we're just looking at certain parts of it. And there's been so much testimony and so much reading, and I'm not quite sure what is our decision going to be based on tonight, based on what the audience, public testimony is. Are we specifically looking at addressing one issue in this plan? Can you inform the public as well as us?
Well, we are going to respond to, we are going to respond to all the evidence we have received and all the comments we have received. We have an obligation to do that as part of our findings. And that's sort of why we came with revised findings tonight. We sort of tried to respond to the testimony received on November 23rd. We're trying to sort of have an evolving document that responds to the issues. The issues are largely the Title IV lands issue and infrastructure. We've kind of got some other issues. This cottage manufacturing issue kind of is a little different, but we are responding to all the issues that are.
All the issues. Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
We haven't, we haven't struck any argument or evidence that was submitted. So we are taking in everything.
So again, it's not a reconsideration of the whole concept plan, but we are looking at all the testimony that's coming in.
And it is largely up to you, how you want to treat the concept plan now.
Okay.
So we have the whole ball field, so to speak.
Because I thought it was based on Luba or that decision that had come down.
We are, we are in a remand position where the instructions from the city commission to the planning commission were to revisit the Title IV lands issue and take notice of the revised master plan, utility master plan. And I think those are the critical issues.
Okay. Any other questions for staff at this time?
I was just wondering about TriMet as a part of the alternative modes analysis in this new alternative transportation. Are they a player in this at all?
We still, we still have not heard any comment from TriMet on this.
I would like to hear from them.
Okay.
Good luck with that.
Well.
I'm going to say it.
I know, I know.
I'm going to say it.
Pete, I just wanted to be clear on the, the west mixed use neighborhood, it's, it's, it is still intended to be medium and high density, it's like R2 housing. Is that what that, I was trying to find the definition of it in the concept plan here. I just wanted.
Correct. Twenty-two to 25 units per acre.
Yeah. So that was part of my brain thinking of, okay, how does that relate to cottage manufacturing if it's medium and high density? I don't know. So that's, that's a question.
And Pete, are we borrowing from Clackamas County TSP for some of these advanced mobility targets?
It's too early, too early to tell. There will be strong collaboration there. Talking to Karen Bureg at the county, they have, with respect to roadway planning and jurisdiction, for the time being, I mean, the county's roadway standards apply, they're in place, but the city will make the call with respect to land use decisions and future rightway construction. So it's definitely a joint review process right now, and so will be the alternative mobility targets and the scope of work associated with that.
And then I've got another question about open space. The findings talk about, originally talking about trying to get 16 acres per thousand, and it was significantly reduced to a six to 10 acre per thousand. Don't we want to aim high?
I think the six to 10 acres was discussed with Parks and Rec Advisory Committee at that time, and that's where that recommendation came from. I don't disagree that you should aim high when it's planning at that level. Part of the concern has to do with maintaining what we are able to finance. And certainly, there's going to be active recreation areas as well as passive recreation areas as well, so.
Right.
Any other questions at this time? Okay.
Not at this time.
So we will proceed to the public testimony portion of the hearing. And as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, our typical procedure is to allow five minutes for representatives of neighborhood associations and three minutes for the general public. And we have a timer. Please don't make me mean and tell you that you're out of time. That would be great.
Sorry about our presenters.
So the first person that we have signed up to speak is Christine Kosinski. And if you are representing a neighborhood association, if you could please identify yourself as such, that would be helpful for us to give you the appropriate amount of You may proceed.
Christine Kosinski, Incorporated Clackamas County. The city has no transportation plan to move traffic from the hilltop to the transportation corridor. Because the intersection of Beaver Creek Road and Highway 213 is already failing, the city had no alternative other than to control access on Beaver Creek Road. Without access control, the intersection fails, forcing the city to halt the plethora of development as planned for the road. The city has planned a central road through the concept plan, forcing traffic to use the central road to Thayer, Maple Lane, and Holly, where huge amounts of traffic will be directed to a planned roundabout at Maple Lane and Holly. The peoples of Holly Lane especially have repeatedly asked the city to remove it from its TSP due to the fact that the street is lined with many fragile landslides, and the people are unable to obtain landslide insurance, as evidenced by the denial that I recently turned into the city by Lloyds of London for myself. For the city to plan using Holly Lane for heavy traffic is a failure for the city to meet landslide requirements in both the state and city comprehensive plans. I cannot believe that this city would even consider approval of this plan, where the huge footprint of development will have disastrous implications for the people of Holly Lane. These people are victims who cannot get insurance to protect their properties. For the city to consider approval of this plan, knowing they are planning to use Holly Lane as a freeway, knowing these people cannot get insurance, and knowing you are placing them in harm's way, is simply inconceivable, callous, and immoral. I know I speak for all the property owners of Holly Lane in asking you to deny approval of the Beaver Creek Road concept plan because you have no transportation plan. Furthermore, you cannot meet Goal 12 and Goal 7, and it is a requirement that all state goals be met before this concept plan can meet your approval. The city cannot meet Goal 7 when it is unable to protect people and their property from harm in hazardous areas, and when you know they are unable to obtain landslide insurance to protect themselves from financial ruin. Lastly, we ask once again, as we've asked before many times, please take Holly Lane out of your TSP. Thank you.
Next is Jay Pearce.
I was unaware that we had two items on the attendance tonight.
He's here for the hospital.
Item number three, the hospital.
You're for the hospital? Okay.
Item number two or three, which is, I don't remember two, there's over two items.
There's three.
Three, three items.
Hospital's two.
Could be four by name and identity.
The woman's whichever one.
He's not speaking on the slide.
That's okay. Okay, next will be, I think it's John Makler.
Good evening. John Makler, Oregon Department of Transportation, Portland, Oregon. I just want to say briefly, I know that there are a lot of questions about the transportation implications of this plan. The department has been in open communication with staff, understand the public concerns. I want to affirm the letter that I've submitted that expresses our lack of objection to the staff findings. It is It is confusing, maybe, that this happens in several steps. That you can adopt the concept plan, then go into the refinement plan for the traffic issues, and then after you've come to a solution, a resolution, through the alternative mobility standards and other improvements, finally identifying what the investments will be in intersections such as Beaver Creek Road and 213, that then you can implement the plan through zoning and designations. But that is our understanding, and we feel that the city has a clear way forward on that issue so that we can resolve the issues, the traffic issues at the intersection. So, I just wanted to appear and say that we have communicated clearly, and the department is comfortable with the approach that the city staff have proposed. If I can answer any questions for you, I would be happy to do that this evening.
Are there questions at this time?
I've got one. Would you agree that we take these land development procedures step by step incrementally? And in doing so, we force the various agencies that are responsible to respond in kind, to consider improvements and make budgets accordingly? Is that overstating the process? Or is that kind of the way things happen automatically? We're not going to do this all in one fell swoop with one paintbrush. Am I correct, transportation-wise?
I'll try to say it back, and you can tell me if I've got it right, that it seems inevitable that we do the plans in a piecemeal fashion, that we tackle the land use, and then we do the transportation, that you wish you could sort of blink and everything would happen all at once, that you could do all of your plans concurrently. I agree, it would be nice if you could do all of them all at once as a bundle. Our state planning system describes the transportation system plan as an element of the comprehensive plan. The way that we nest our comprehensive plans within each other, yours sits within the regional transportation plan, which sits within the statewide scheme. We're always dealing with a cycle, and whether you're sort of at the front of the cycle, you know, one's chasing the other one, or vice versa, seems to be the necessary outcome of our system.
Do you know Luba's phone number?
I don't keep it on speed dial. I have a couple of friends here who I think do.
Well, we got a lot of these smartphones, and I think they're kind of dumb, myself. But, I mean, if these state agencies were talking to each other and taking the pressure off these local governments to, you know, we're sitting here going like this.
Yep.
And we don't have the resources to go like this.
Right.
And we've got about ten agencies that we have to comply with. And frankly, you know, my head's spinning, you know, which comes first? And so, it's good to hear you say that, that at least you guys at your desk recognize what's going on.
Yeah, and I hear directly from the public, the frustrations that they have, and I'm sure you do as well. I understand that. This is a fairly, either untrodden or very, very lightly trodden path, this alternative mobility standards. So, we're all going to be sort of holding hands and going into it together. But I think that the staff report emphasized that it will be done as a partnership between the city and the county and the state. So, I'd like to say that at least I don't think you'll be doing it alone, that you'll have the partnership and the efforts of staff from other agencies to help your staff figure out how that works. I don't believe that there will be a transportation system plan that the city will adopt, that it's people, you know, you have a process here. That will then go to the Oregon Transportation Commission. It also has statewide goals to observe and need in a public process. So, if it comes to be, it will be the will of the people. And we all will try to do it as efficiently as possible.
So, you guys do get involved with Metro when they do their transportation analysis zones, right, for the employment areas?
As best we can.
Okay, because, I mean, I guess that's, I echo Bob's disconnect with that and the amount of concern that I have for Metro wanting for us to achieve those, you know, the TAS numbers and the employment numbers and all that good stuff into areas that, you know, where our intersections are failing. And so, I guess we just want to come to some endpoint in our ability to come up with a viable traffic solution.
If I can keep joking, Pete said you're a traffic engineering consultant in the room, so we've got to keep that person employed, don't we?
Well, I guess that's what it's all about, isn't it?
Right. No, I think that the system of Metro going through, identifying these TAS's when we go through significant land use actions like this, the research, the methodologies that they follow, I have a lot of confidence that they follow a process to get it as technically right. They might easily take 20 years to do it. That wouldn't work for our process. So, they've got to do it within a reasonable amount of time. That requires making assumptions, making decisions. Some of those seem very political sometimes. It can be frustrating. But I think it's a good process, and these are the hardest issues, I think, for that to tackle.
So, then if we go down a level, and we're not able to, you know, do all the great infrastructure that we were thinking we were going to get, you know, at other intersections as well as this one, we want to look at the softer approaches and the transportation, like the TRIMET provides, maybe enhanced bus, or increased bus routes, or more bus routes, and that kind of thing, too. So, I would think that they would be something, you know, an agency that would want to be at the table in this discussion as well?
Yeah, I sense that there's some context to the earlier comment about TRIMET, and I don't know it. But I think if I can be helpful in bringing a partner to the table at least, I would be willing to do what I can.
Yeah.
But that is very much the point of the refinement. The refinement plan that we're discussing is to identify, you know, if you open the toolbox and figure out everything that you can do that can fit within a financially constrained plan.
Well, I mean, if you're going to have a TDM, or a TSM, or any of those kinds of things, where are those people going to go? They're going to have to get on a bus, right? So, I mean, I don't know.
We researched blimps, but it was very unpromising.
Right, right. It'd be fun, though. It'd be fun.
Thank you. I think you hit the key word, financially constrained.
And I just wrote that down. I had a question, and I'm not sure if it's a question or a comment, or if it's for you or for Pete. But I noted in your initial comments, Pete, you were talking about the TSP accomplished through new development and reimbursement districts, as well as through SDCs. And I recall several comments of the public, as well as me witnessing it on Sunnyside, where things were built out, and then all of a sudden, the roads got improved, and it was just a mess over there on Sunnyside. So, if the roads can't be done before all the development takes place, isn't that the horse after the cart, so to speak? And if it's financially constrained, how does this transportation plan work to ease that whole time period where construction is taking place? Sorry, it's a long-winded question.
Within the transportation system plan, they look at all potential improvements, constrained and otherwise. Based on the transportation area zone analysis that we use because we're a metro city. Oh, sorry.
Sorry. Based on the TAS, or transportation area zone methodology, they come to the final analysis, which showed that in 2035, in one of the documents in there, in the transportation system plan, they show a system that is running and working fairly well. How it happens is pretty messy and slow and long process. There's no doubt about that, because there isn't enough money to build the system before development comes online.
Is that kind of rough on the citizens? Are people traveling that road?
Yeah. There are ways to manage some of that pain, but it is difficult. There's no doubt about it.
Well, therein lies the problem. There's not enough money to solve these infrastructure problems. And therefore, do we put a moratorium on everything that we have within the city? And that's not feasible.
Bob, let's not get into discussion at this point. We're in public testimony.
Sorry, we were talking about transportation, so I initiated that.
I think we're getting a little off the course here. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
You all very much.
John.
The next person scheduled to speak is Paul Edgar.
Our kid, well, the commission. In front of you is a document that's out of goal.
Identify yourself, please.
Paul Edgar, Oregon city resident.
Thank you.
OAR six, or Goal Six, has a statement in it, "Plans providing for transportation systems should consider as a major determinant the carrying capacity of air, land, and water resources of the planning area. The land conservation and development actions provided for by such plans should not exceed the carrying capacity of such resources." So, if we've got this as a kind of a determinant, a parameter, a value, we know that the intersection of 213 and Beaver Creek Road is at failing stage. It is LOSF, and that is the ITE standard that the state of Oregon uses to measure congestion concurrency. There is an inconsistency between what the state does and using a volume-over-capacity methodology. But when we have to look at it, then, is how does this affect, as an example, Mulholland? How does this affect everybody in the Beaver Creek hamlet? If I put a roadblock up by introducing greater incidence of travel exceeding level of Service F right now? This, I heard a debate about this just the other day at Clackamas County when we were talking about creating a sewer moratorium on all construction because we don't have enough capacity at Tri-Cities. And all of a sudden, they said, well, maybe we'll have to abridge that gap. But it's a physical carrying capacity. And so, if I block it off, cars are going to be putting more emissions out. Trucks will not be able to flow, and I will be creating, hurting the economy. So, I will have a detrimental effect on job creation. We have to solve this problem. We have to have, we need a plan. We can't defer the plan. We need a plan. All of the transportation studies that are in existence are nearly 10 years old, and those are light years. We need to come up with a plan before we move ahead, and that's imperative. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. The next person scheduled to speak is Jim Nacita.
James Nacita, I live in Oregon City. First, I've been debating with myself whether to say this, but I feel compelled to say it. I'm not sure what Betty Mum's intent was in speaking at the beginning of this meeting, but if it was an intent by the mayor to send his domestic partner before this commission at the beginning of the meeting in an attempt to say that eyes are upon you, and in a sly attempt with a friendly face to intimidate you, I hope you will reject that and bring Oregon City planning into the 21st century. So, there, I said it. So, back to this Beaver Creek Road concept plan. I'll leave my comments regarding Goal Six with my written comments, but I do want to get to the stuff that was mentioned regarding cottage industry. And I think I can address a number of comments that were made earlier by taking the long view of this. On July 20th, 2011, the City Commission made a directive, as Mr. Conkle was explaining. And under our charter, I believe it was the staff's responsibility to fill that directive and proceed with it and undertake to satisfy the commission's directive on this. It's four and a half years later, and in all the time that this Beaver Creek concept plan was under consideration, there was plenty of time, for example, to satisfy Commissioner Mahoney's inquiry as to whether there was a demand for things like cottage housing, to take into account Commissioner McGariff's inquiry as far as how cottage housing would relate to whether, you know, it was appropriate for a neighborhood of sufficient residential density. Plenty of time to do that. It wasn't done. In the findings, revised findings, the factual findings you have, the July 20th, 2011 vote isn't even mentioned. It's not even part of the factual record, although it is a critical part of this whole proceeding. And to my knowledge, and, you know, it's never been discussed since that motion and vote was taken four and a half years ago. So, that compromises the process. It compromises the process because now we're at the end of the process, and amendments that could have been considered and changes made in all that time would now be considered, you know, very controversial and unacceptable if they were proposed at the very end of the process. For example, during the process, it could have been decided to convert the whole residential neighborhoods to cottage manufacturing or other manufacturing type of concept for the western used neighborhoods to replace manufacturing capacity we've lost, for example, with the Blue Hare Mill closing. So, I'm just going to close really quickly. I would be satisfied if there was an amendment to the plan that just added the words cottage manufacturing into the types of uses that are authorized in these zones. And then, during the zoning and comp plan development process, because they are authorized in the concept plan, we can consider the zoning specifications in the comp plan and planning process. But right now, as it stands now, I don't think you can do the zoning and comp plan because the comp plan doesn't authorize manufacturing explicitly in that plan. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person scheduled to speak is Elizabeth Gracer Lindsay.
I'm Elizabeth Gracer Lindsay, and I live in the Beaver Creek area. It's not a good idea to be looking at the Beaver Creek Road concept plan in a re-adoption process, because the studies that were done 10 years ago are out of date. A new transportation study should have been done to see what the transportation issues are, because there's been extensive development approved in the Beaver Creek Road and Highway 213 corridors that mean that you need to have up-to-date information. The Beaver Creek Road concept plan was developed at a time when the city's transportation system plan still included an interchange at the Beaver Creek Road and Highway 213 intersection. So, when that interchange left, it made your transportation planning invalid. The Beaver Creek Road concept plan relies on having a internal, a series of internal roads that parallel Beaver Creek Road and take what would be kind of overflowed traffic, and they take it on down to Holly Lane. There's a big gap in that idea, which is in the Thayer Road, Maple Lane area, where there's currently housing. So, the city needs to buy that land and put the road in in order for the transportation system to work. The plan was designed with the three-lane Beaver Creek Road, so it, which Beaver Creek Road can't handle the additional traffic. So, if you don't get this parallel system working, the whole thing doesn't work at all. It comes to a... It comes to a complete stop. And there has been no discussion of how to buy that land and get that junction in there. And then we also know that there's no funding to improve Holly Lane, which is a two-lane winding road with drop-offs and no shoulders, and it's having major accidents at the bends in different places. And so here you would have bicyclists and pedestrians in the lane of traffic trying to be feeding a whole lot of new traffic in there. There's a number of other issues I've shared with you in my written remarks, and I hope you consider them before you move ahead with this.
That is all I have for public testimony at this point, unless there's someone else that would like to speak that has not turned in a slip. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public testimony for this hearing.
If John is still here, can we bring him back up?
I don't know what the protocol on that is. Tony?
Gentlemen from ODOT.
I have no problem with it. That's fine with me.
We could bring the ODOT rep?
You have some additional questions? Is he still here?
Yes, he is.
And I apologize for earlier bringing up the subject of that, but I thought he's not public. He's more official of a government agency.
He is.
That's why I thought I'd address it at that time.
Just trying to keep this system on the rails. Okay, let's...
I think we're still on the rails.
This is a legislative proceeding, so it doesn't have the same procedural rails.
Wider boundaries.
Wider rails.
Wider rails, okay. So we have an official from ODOT that we can pick his brain, so let's do that.
I don't want him to leave brainless, but my question involves...
I appreciate the starting assumption.
Yes. Well, you've got a lot of information.
I think he has a surplus to share.
And I don't want Chair Kidwell to pick your brain dry, so...
We have a flak vest if you need.
So the big elephant in the room is obviously, as you stated, transportation. And I think in the best of all possible worlds, it would be really great if we knew some things now as opposed to later. So it seems to me that it looks like we are kicking the can down the road again because I was rereading the little memo that we got from 1993 about development in Beaver Creek Road, and it seems to me that, I guess I'm just not, I'm not understanding how we're going to get there. I hate to mention the M-word that Commissioner Mahoney mentioned, but the world keeps turning, and we already have a problem now. And the problem, well, we've had a problem at that intersection for the last 20 years, so it's not a new problem. I understand that the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan is supposed to be down the road. How do we get to where we need to be sooner than later?
Good answer.
It's good nodding. Good nodding. I appreciate it.
I don't think I can top that, then.
No, you may not be able to.
The path, let me start by sort of restating. The path that you're on, I think, is the right one, and that's why I said so in my letter. The sequence of actions that I expect you're going to take if you adopt this concept plan, move it forward, the staff recommendation is then to do this refinement plan. The refinement plan determines, I think in a matter of months...
Pete?
How much you can squeeze out of all the kind of supplementary actions at the intersection. And it would adopt, the expectation is, these alternative mobility standards. So let's talk about that. I'll come back to what that is in just a second. That then clears the way for the city to adopt the zoning and the comp plan designations, which represent the implementation of this plan. So the concept plan, the transportation refinement plan, and then the implementation actions, and away you go. To me, that's a logical sequence. I would not characterize that as kicking the can. I think those are the logical steps. To Commissioner Mahoney's question earlier, it's frustrating that it's a stepwise thing. You want to just, if you were doing a home renovation, you would figure out how to do the plumbing and the electrical and everything else while you were roughing. You wouldn't...
Put the walls in.
Put the walls in and then take them away and then go back in. That would be, I think I'm allowed to say, stupid. And you don't want to do that here, but I think what you're doing is you're doing a bunch of things at roughin' before you put the walls on. And that is how I would characterize the process that staff has proposed to you, and that's why I'm here to say that makes sense to me. I think that the refinement plan gives you the opportunity to see if there are any other actions that you can take at that intersection, that we can take at that intersection. But the questions that I've been getting about this by phone and email are, you know, in 2013, we took this interchange out of the transportation system plan, and that was the action that the city took in its transportation system plan. That is what you have on the books. That represents, I think, a financial reality that ODOT's not, that there isn't going to be the money to build an interchange. And in light of that, now you're on this path. Would you like to be on the path where you don't have congestion because you've grade separated everything? Sure, that'd be lovely. But could we justify the cost for that? The position when the plan was adopted in 2013 was no. And so that's the plan we're working with. So I would not characterize this as kicking the can down the road. I think you're taking prudent steps to meet what I understand from the staff report to be the primary issue, which is satisfying the industrial lands requirement. You're making that change to your concept plan. That resolves the key issue with respect to metro. And then you'll do the refinement plan, and that'll resolve the transportation issue.
So the follow-up question then is, the city is not going to be immune to pressures to develop, not only in the concept plan area, but in other areas that are definitely going to be affected, affect this intersection?
Yes.
So 20 years ago, we couldn't afford it...
Correct.
...to do the grade separation.
Yes.
So obviously, that makes sense to me that we can't afford it now, but, you know, it would have been cheaper then, but $1993 are different than $2016.
True, versus 2035.
Right. Versus, who knows what it'll cost in 2035? And maybe I'm just thinking out loud. So we have, we want to increase our employment, but as I know from issues in the city of Portland, when businesses can't get their goods and services out of an area because of congestion, they start looking for other places to go. And in a way, we might already be there. I mean, with Beaver, I will honestly tell you, I don't use the Beaver Creek 213 intersection if I can help it, because I don't really need to go that way. But I know that it had congestion problems 20 years ago and has congestion problems now. I mean, I've been through it recently.
If I can interject on that. I drove out Beaver Creek Road to Colton and out to Malala Saturday night for dinner, and I tried to imagine a five-lane highway, but I also tried to imagine what it would be like to have all those, the construction going on with only those two lanes. That's why I mentioned it earlier about Sunnyside.
When you were talking about Sunnyside, yeah.
And I remember Sunnyside, going up and down that. And I'm thinking, okay, kicking the can down the road, all these things that we talked about, and you talked about squeezing out what we got right now.
Disclose, yeah.
And I keep thinking, how is this all going to work? Because of those people who, I just go out that way occasionally, but those people who live out that way, with all that construction, all the equipment, all the new homes going in, and new side roads, without that big highway first being put in, which nobody seems to be excited about, how is this all going to work to the satisfaction of the public and the people driving? Like you said, not just the intersection, but trucks moving in and out.
Well, if I can opine a little bit, what I think we struggle with in the field of planning is making trade-offs between goals.
Right.
You know, and you mentioned that earlier. So what I believe, the Oregon Transportation Commission, which is where my mind goes, what they'll grapple with in this path, when they're presented with alternative mobility standards, which say in effect, we are deciding to have people experience delay here. We're accepting the congestion in exchange for allowing other things to happen. But that's the trade-off.
Because they don't live there.
Well, no, but that's happening in other places. The Oregon Department of Transportation, the line that we're drawing is safety.
Yeah.
If a jurisdiction decides that it wants to develop in such a way that results in congestion, and they articulate that in the transportation system plan as an element of their comprehensive plan, who am I to tell you, in your wisdom, not to adopt the plan that way? I will step in if I feel, the Oregon Department of Transportation will step in if we feel that that poses, that creates a danger to the safety of the traveling public. But if people are willing to accept the trade-off for the positives that this development will bring, and that the cost of that is congestion at an intersection, that's why we do public planning. And if your transportation system plan comes out and says, we accept, as your fellow testimony said, instead of a .99 ratio, we're going to accept a 1.1, 1.2, 1.5, 17,000 to 1, whatever you come up with, if that's what your transportation system plan says, and you've gone through a public process and engaged your partners, that will be what your transportation system plan says.
My problem is that, sitting up here and listening over the last, since November sometime, I've only heard one positive about it, so the people don't really want that congestion, but it's part of the concept plan.
Yes.
And that really throws my brain into like, well, most of the people we've heard from don't like this whole idea, and they keep bringing up the idea of transportation. And yet, we've heard one positive in that time that I remember. So I'm dealing with that.
Remind me about that.
Yeah, I remember. Yeah, but no, thank you. Thank you. That helps. I get it.
The thing, if I put on my citizen hat and set out in the audience right now, my point of view, as I drive through that intersection, which I do Monday through Friday, is that it's not unusual that I have to sit through two or three light sequences to get through that particular intersection.
Yes.
And it's already overloaded, okay? Now, from the citizen's point of view, I'm thinking, why would we allow more traffic to go through that intersection than is already going through there in a failing intersection? That tells me that any development, any development at all is maybe not a good idea. So how do you balance saying, no, we're going to shut off this picket, no more development, versus allowing more development without a solution in between? And I think that's the hard part, is you recognize there's a problem, but you don't want to say, no, we're done with development in Oregon City.
That's exactly it.
So how do you resolve that?
Maybe we say that.
I think part of the answer there is giving you an outlet, because at what point will you not take that trip? Right now, you're willing to sit through three or four lights, and it's fine because you're doing it. But is it six lights? Will you take your bike? Or seven? Is that even an option?
Well, and see, that's, to me, that's one of the issues that I have a real problem with, is that there's never going to be a time that taking a bike is an option for me. This is not even realistic.
Right.
So the whole discussion of multimodal, when we talk about it, is a nonstarter because I'm never going to be able to walk to work, I'm never going to be able to ride my bike to work. The only other alternative is TriMet. And if TriMet doesn't provide the service, and they don't even want to talk to our city reps, how do you get that resolved? We've got an impasse.
Flying cars.
You know, I'm not sure John has an answer for it, but, you know, we're talking about...
You ran for this office, man.
I did not.
You wear Shanghai, really. You're Shanghai all around.
I think it's important, and those are very valid points to bring up. I think one of the difficulties, being a regional center, is the amount of trips that, without the Beaver Creek Concept Plan, the city still has an issue with that intersection.
Right.
Fifty-plus percent of the trips do not start or stop in Oregon City.
Right. And that's where I like Bob's idea of the toll gate at the south end of Oregon City.
Why not a catapult, you know?
Let's put a toll gate there.
No, he's talking about collecting money so we can build the intersection.
I'm not allowed to say the T-word, I'm sorry.
No, no, you can't. We can say it.
As you may recall, it's a little bit different, but we did come up with a multimodal mixed-use area designation in downtown Oregon City for 9090. We cooperated with the Oregon Department of Transportation to identify fixes. So, you know, when we talk about coming up with these alternative mobility standards and focusing on safety, it's also taking and looking at the corridor, and how can you make the corridor function to the best that we can? We're talking about squeezing as much capacity, as much availability as we can. And these are the true trade-offs. You know, and the flip side of that is, to what end do you consider to continue to raise SDC taxes in Oregon City to pay for improvements to an interchange that's on a state facility that serves a larger region? And there is a true equity issue there.
That was the problem we talked about 20 years ago.
Is, what's our fair share? Is it 50%? Is it a third? Is it 10%? You know, and so what can we do to ensure that that's, that we not only get as much efficiency out of that corridor, but it's as safe as we can make it at this point? Without putting in, you know, we can certainly adopt a moratorium in Oregon City and not do any more zone changes. We will continue to see developments south and east of Oregon City that'll utilize 213 and Beaver Creek Road. There is nothing that we can do about that.
People will come.
And so what can we do realistically for our finances and the options that we have available to us to make improvements there that are prudent and smart? That was the whole concept behind the alternative mobility standards.
And that's what goes through my mind, is what's worse? Do we not plan at all for this area and let the people come and clog up the intersection even worse? Or do we do a plan and have it somewhat regulated?
Right. You know, and I think the frustrating part is, you could go out there right now, and there is more, I mean, you know what it's like right now. But that right now is not the issue. And it's how much do you spend for those hours when it is operating above the V over C or whatever other alternative, you know, whatever level of service you want to use to measure it? We know there's an issue. What can we do to address it is where we're at.
Thank you, John.
If you don't keep up with growth by improving your tax base, you're not going to be collecting STCs, and you're not going to be having enough money to run your city.
STCs aren't even going to come close to covering anything of that magnitude.
And you'll even have less if you don't have it.
We need to win the Powerball thing going on right now. That's how we're going to get the money.
So...
Yeah, you can close the public hearing.
Did you notice how our speaker disappeared?
Public, yeah. I let it go.
Thank you.
The public hearing portion of the evening is closed on this issue. So where's the commission on this as far as making a motion? The city staff has asked us to refer this to the city council with our blessing?
Not yet.
Are we at a point of doing that? Or do we have some more issues we want to talk about?
I think we have some more stuff we would need to talk about. I've got a couple of things on my list.
Can we maybe do, so if that's where we're at, you know, and I apologize, we have a lot of things on tonight, would it be worth maybe moving on to the other hearings, coming back? If we know we're going to punt this down the road, can we move to the other ones?
What do you mean punt?
I can't, I was getting the feeling there probably wasn't going to be a decision on this tonight, but maybe I'm incorrect.
Later is what you're saying? Are you getting on with the other business?
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't have any issue with that there. Let me just tell, I won't go into detail, but I wanted to go back around to the cottage industry manufacturing thing. I still have some questions about Holly Lane with regard to how this plan affects it. And then there's sort of where we started having a discussion with Mr. Mackler about, like I said, the... about, like I said, the transportation is the elephant that's in the room tonight, it just is. I think the industrial lands part is pretty simple. I think we've done everything we can do with that.
Well, I would just respond-
I don't have any problem punting it till later, but, but I'm not ready to, I can't make a motion.
Tony, are you suggesting we-
Make a motion and continue it?
Well, I was just trying to avoid another hour of deliberation, especially if we're just going to continue it.
You suggest we continue this to-
Unless you're at a spot where you think you can make a recommendation to the city commission and, and move that. I mean, I, I, you know, I agree with, you know, you know, coming up with, the, the process we've set up to come up with alternative mobility standards, I think is the appropriate one. I agree with, with what you heard tonight, and how we would address that. The cottage manufacturing, the cottage industry, you know, I don't, I don't have a problem with, with continuing to push that forward to, to look at that. So, you know, I guess it's trying to identify, what are we down to that we have not addressed in the matrix to satisfaction of the commission? And if we can get there tonight, I would obviously love to move this forward to the commission, but if we're not anywhere near it, I, you know, we have two other hearings tonight that we'd like to try to get to as well. So I make the motion that we continue it to the next available date? If that's agreeable to anybody down there?
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Yeah.
Denise doesn't appear to be ready.
She didn't, I would. I'd like to chime in with open space, too. I think we'd probably try to acquire a little bit more than what the final day-
And if we could reach out to hound TriMet, we'd love to have some comment.
Well, I think, I think that there, a statement needs to be made about that, you know, in some way, shape, or form, that, because I don't know how you do the alternatives analysis without that, them as a partner.
Exactly.
That's, that's a big piece missing.
Well, I, I, I'm going to reluctantly support the commission's consensus on this, but personally, I think we've got to the point now where anything else is just going to be redundant. I think that we've talked this thing to death. I think the public wants us to make a decision. I think we've got testimony and information here to, to support our position on approving this. That traffic problem's not going to go away, go away anyway soon, we're going to have to address that. The home occupancy permit, I think, is something that was going to come back to haunt us forever and ever. That may be too vague of a statement, but if it were left to me, I would, I would move on and recommend it to the commission.
And then what about, what about some of the discussion that occurred in the audience about updating some of the studies, like the transportation study especially, and then maybe some of the other stuff?
Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan was, the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan was included in the update to the transportation system plan, which was done-
Oh, that's right, that's right.
2013.
We've updated the sanitary sewer master plan, the water master plan, so-
Gotcha.
All that data's been updated.
Okay.
Zach, your thoughts?
I made a motion, we had a second.
I actually, I'm with Bob, that I would be comfortable moving this forward. I think some of the issues, with open space aside, I think the cottage industry is, it's a discussion and an issue that can be, that can wait until the zoning. And I think, I think we've gotten probably the best response on transportation that we're going to hope for, with Mackler's testimony tonight.
I, I seconded the motion primarily because we've heard a lot of testimony. We have not had an opportunity to fully embrace all the testimony and respond to it ourselves. That's the part that we haven't done yet.
Well, speak for yourself, I've embraced it all for the last-
Well, no, I'm talking, well, I'm not talking about us embracing them, I'm talking about, I haven't fully explained some of where my concerns are. I've gone over this thing with a fine-tooth comb, I've sat down with Pete on this, and I think that we're almost there. And so my, my concern is, let's not rush to judgment. This is a very important plan and a process that we are setting into motion, and continuing it is not going to break the bank. It's, it's going to give us a more solid foundation when we pass this on to the, to the city city commission. We're doing the heavy lifting here, and we're kind of, in my opinion, we're, we're here, we're not quite there yet, but we're almost there. We're almost there.
You're talking to an old man, I don't know how much I can hold there.
And I made the motion only because of the fact that it seemed like we weren't going to be able to complete this tonight, and I wanted for the sake of moving to the next business-
I'll call for the question.
So, just to clarify, this is a continuance until the next planning commission, or the-
Next available.
So, the next available date is January 25th, and the date after that is February 8th.
And could we not load that up so we can do this? I thought we were going to be able to do it tonight. And then I looked on the agenda, and we're loaded. And that does not allow, to me, really good consensus thinking about it, when we've got like, everybody's sitting out there going, hurry up and get to my item.
So, we have no new items coming before the planning commission, but just these three, too?
Right.
So, is January 25th enough time?
So, I just want to make sure we have adequate time, and, you know, if somebody rushes in and says they absolutely have to have their thing on the agenda, it's like, it's too late now, for the 25th.
All right. Commissioner Mahoney?
You talking to me? All right.
He's still there.
Commissioner Hinkin.
Hi.
Commissioner Esping.
Hi.
Commissioner O'Griff.
Hi.
Commissioner Guile.
Hi.
Chair Kidwell.
Hi.
Motion passed.
Just to clarify, the record is open, or the record is closed?
Record's closed.
We're just coming back for discussion.
Good.
And decision.
Good.
Bring your big piles of paper.
Did you say for decision?
Nice. I could have made my decision live, I just wanted us to move on.
Okay, so we are continued on this matter until January 25th.
Because I don't have enough paper.
No, I don't either.
Chair Kidwell, would you like to take a break so we can switch the tapes?
I was just going to ask, do we need to change the CD? They don't use tapes anymore.
Well, metaphorically, the tape. How about that?
Okay, so we'll take about seven minutes, we'll reconvene at 10 minutes till.
Thank you.
Okay, we are back to order. Turning my mic on, we're back to order. And one, one of the commissioners mentioned to me, there was a question of whether, since we've continued the hearing on the first matter, is the public testimony still open? And the question is, no, it's not, it is closed, or the answer is, it is closed. If any additional evidence or testimony is received in between, that will be included in the record, but there's no additional testimony at the next hearing.
Just a second.
If the record is closed, then-
No, there won't be any.
No written testimony will be accepted into the record.
Okay.
However, the city commission's proceedings will include an open record. So, there will be an opportunity for folks to submit additional oral and written testimony when the matter is before the commission.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Gary.
So, we are proceeding with item 3B on our agenda. The zone change, which is PC 15247, ZC 1504, and PZ 1502, amendment to the comprehensive plan, and CP 1502, master plan amendment, and these all apply to the Willamette Falls Hospital Master Plan. I'm going to read the quasi-judicial hearing script, which is applicable to this, and any other quasi-judicial matters tonight. The public hearing on land use application that we're considering tonight, a staff report has been prepared for each application, and has been made available to the public seven days before the public hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to each applicant's proposal. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report. The quasi-judicial hearing procedure that the commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the chart on the wall. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a speaker's card and give it to the planning staff before the hearing. Speakers will proceed in the order in which their card is received. You should fill out your card, your address on the cards, the city will notify you of its final decision. For the public record, please begin all testimony stating your name. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria, and explain how and why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person may submit any written material while the public record is open on each application. Any written materials received by the city staff during the time period in which the record is open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to the city staff in order to become part of the record. If a person intends for PowerPoint presentations, oversized poster boards, reports, pictures, or other exhibits used in their oral testimony to be placed in the record, copies must be submitted to the city staff while the record is open. If they are not given to staff, they will not be included in the record. Any person wishing a continuance to present additional evidence and testimony, or to keep the record open to respond to new evidence, must make that request before the public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. If the planning commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue that you may wish to appeal must have been raised for the consideration of the city commission, or LUBA, or both. Without raising the issue on the record without sufficient specificity, and accompanied by statements or evidence that the city and all parties can respond, the issue will not be deemed appealable to the Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, the failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issues precludes any action for damages in circuit court. We will now open the record for the Oregon City files that I've read regarding the Willamette Falls Hospital Master Plan. Do any of the commissioners have any expertise contacts, conflicts of interest, or any other statements to declare? And has any commissioner visited the site since our last hearing on this matter? Tom?
I've been up there many times to see doctors, but that's it.
Yes, I've been in the area on a fairly regular basis since our last meeting. I also want to just make a statement that I was at a neighborhood meeting last week, where one of the representatives from Willamette Falls Hospital attended. There was a item on our agenda that was discussed, I was not in the room during that discussion, and so I don't have anything to say about it, because I don't know what they said.
I don't have any expertise contact. No expertise contact.
Nothing new to declare.
Nothing to declare.
And I have nothing to declare this evening on this matter. Does the audience have any questions for any of the commissioners on these disclosures? Seeing none, we will move forward. We have a staff report.
Thank you very much. Laura Turway with the Planning Division. The city received an application from Providence Willamette Falls Medical Center for a variety of things. None of them include construction at this point, just a zone change, an amendment to our comprehensive plan, and amendment to their approved master plan. The subject site, or the hospital, is located generally near Division Street and 15th, as shown on the aerial photo. There was a master plan previously approved for the hospital. It's a 2011 planning file, and it was approved in 2012. This is a screenshot of the master plan and its boundaries. It included a series of implementation of three phases. The first phase was construction of a parking lot near Division and Penn Lane, that has since occurred. Phase two, as you can see, involves a series of other construction projects which extend all the way through 2021, as well as phase three, which are the medical office buildings that we'll talk about in a bit more detail later. Here is some additional details regarding their master plan, and the construction square footages that were proposed. So, phase two, which was sort of the largest of the phases, included the most projects, with no particular order in which they were required to be constructed. Phase three included two medical office buildings, one on the west side of Division, or the West MOB, and one on the east side, or the East MOB. The applicant would like to amend their existing master plan, and they'd like to do a couple things with their amendment. First is, they'd like to expand the boundary about an acre. The areas identified for expansion are shown in red on the screen. There is about a half acre or so within each site. The primary purpose of the master plan expansion is to accommodate for a medical office building on the west side of, let me use this, and you can see it on your screen, on the west side of Division Street here. So, the medical office building that was proposed previously was on the east side. This one, rather than having two medical office buildings, they will have just one. Here's a bit more detail about it. So, they would not construct this east medical office building, and they would just construct one medical office building on the west side, and so the expansion is near the medical office building to accommodate for the increase in size. Also, with their master plan, they want to decrease the overall size of the medical office building by about 15,000 to 20,000 square feet, there's ranges in there, that's why, it varies by 5,000 square feet. In the original master plan, they had up to 40,000 to 50,000 square feet in medical office buildings. The applicant would like to reduce the size of the master plan by reducing the square footages of the medical office buildings to 30 to 35, so from 50 to 30, 35. And then also, that would reduce the overall square footage of the full build-out of the campus as well. They would also like to amend their phasing plan, so that there is no longer phase three, there's just phase one and phase two. So, phase three was previously the construction of the two medical office buildings, those will be included in phase two. As you saw before, phase two and three kind of occurred at the same time anyway, they both extended till 2021. The end date is still the same, 2021. That is the master, that is the amendments to the master plan. Next, they had a zone change proposal and amendment to the comprehensive plan, we'll talk about each one by one. First is a zone change. A zone change is required to include these properties identified in red within the master plan boundary. They're currently zoned R6, which is a single-family residential zoning designation. An order to change zoning designation to mixed-use employment is required to accommodate hospital uses, such as a medical office building. They're located on 16th Street. You'll notice that in the master plan expansion, it identified this land right here, as you can tell by the pink or purple color underneath, it's already within the mixed-use employment zoning designation. So, the expansion is for about a total of an acre, but only a half an acre is, needs the zone change and the amendment to the comprehensive plan. The other half acre is already zoned appropriately. When we have a zone change from residential to mixed-use employment, we need to amend our comprehensive plan as well. The low-density residential is the current comprehensive plan designation for the residential area, and the applicant proposed to change the comprehensive plan designation to the mixed-use employment, which is the same name as the zoning designation as well.
Doesn't that backwards?
So, the comp plan designation is mixed-use employment, and the zoning is mixed-use employment?
No, when you, you're talking about the red box, right?
Yep.
So, the comp plan designation for the stuff in the red box is?
Currently, the comp plan is low-density residential, and then underneath that, the zoning is R6, so we need them to both go to mixed-use plan.
You just said it, you said, you said that you have to have a zone change, and then you said the comp plan, but I thought it was, you need to change the comp plan in order to change the zoning. That was my understanding.
Yes, so they've applied for them at the same time. We can't just change the zone without the comp plan, which is our guiding document for the city.
Okay. Just misheard, thank you.
Sorry about that. We've met here a few times, and since then, we've amended our staff report. So, on the screen is a screenshot of our newest staff report, which was in our planning commission packet last Monday, and within that, there were findings demonstrating compliance with all of our applicable- And within that, there were findings demonstrating compliance with all of our applicable approval criteria. I was just going to talk about a couple of things that happened since then. There was a noticing error that has since been remedied, and it has been sent to all applicable parties, and everything that is required on the notice was placed on the notice, so we can check that one off the box. The next one was compliance with state goals. The revised staff report does include findings for compliance with all state goals and any other associated documents which we determine to be an approval criteria or not as well. So I thought I'd keep this nice and short, and recommend approval with conditions. I wanted to enter this PowerPoint into the record as well. Are there any questions I can answer for you? Most of, most of the questions that came up are all satisfied in the staff report.
I've got one. Laura, when you eliminate the residential use and eliminate living units, do you make that up somewhere else in the comp plan, or is that required to do?
So we have extensive findings regarding the reduction of the half acre, or that there's two homes within our six zoning designation. We have taken many steps to allow different opportunities for housing, and then also a variety of housing types, which talk about affordable housing as well. So we have, in our three concept plan areas, Park Place, South End, Beaver Creek, there is room for 3,324 dwelling units. Since October 2002, we have permitted 2,438 dwelling units. We have created mixed-use zones, which allow dwelling units without a limitation on the size of those dwelling units or the number per acre. That's not included in our inventory, but we have determined that that does provide a significant opportunity for many, many dwelling units in our mixed-use zones. We have approved zoning designations since 2004 that would allow 953 more homes in Oregon City or potential dwelling units. And we also did an analysis on our square footages in our land. So about 68% of our city is zoned residential currently. I think it's 14% is zoned R6 specifically, and only 3% is on mixed-use employment. So it's a long answer, but essentially, we tried to do the mathematics in many ways that we could to show that we have expanded the opportunity for dwelling units in many places throughout the city. We've added accessory dwelling units as permitted uses in residential zones. So we've tried to provide land for additional dwelling units and opportunities for additional dwelling units within existing zoning designations as well.
So let me do a follow-up question. So that sounds really super, and that's a lot of great work that you've done, but how does that specifically apply to that particular neighborhood, which has a very limited supply of housing and also a very limited supply of land to build houses on? I couldn't, I couldn't take your analysis and bring it down to this site-specific area.
You're right, it was a citywide analysis. So we, how specific of a site are we talking?
Well, I believe at the previous meeting, we had some testimony about loss of housing stock, and the specific information that was presented to us related to that specific neighborhood. And that, and like I said, the information that you did and provided is very, very good, but I could not extrapolate that information to that specific neighborhood and how the loss of housing stock in that neighborhood applies to that broader analysis that you did.
So without getting into the specifics of it, yes, we just, so we just did the citywide analysis, and that was because in our comprehensive plan, we did these housing studies, things that look at city needs. So we stayed with that scale of city. Nearby, we'll have mixed-use zoning designations. So it depends how nearby or neighborhood scale that you're talking, but so all of that first shelf of the city is mixed-use downtown, or most of it is. So right when you drop down the hill off 15th, that will all have had a place where multifamily residential is a permitted use, and you can essentially put as many dwelling units onto a property as you can, provided you meet the parking and the height and setbacks and things like that.
I think we have some slide problems in that 15th Street area, too.
So that, that helps accommodate for that. I didn't pull the location of all of the zone changes, so I'm not sure how many zone changes since 2004. We keep referring to 2004 because that's when we adopted our comprehensive plan, just so that the audience knows.
I don't think we've had any in the McLaughlin neighborhood.
We have, we have had a lot of infill lots in McLaughlin.
Not that many.
Because we've had a lot, a lot of records, and since, I think I've been here since 2003.
Mr. McGriff, I'm not sure that there's any sort of criteria that requires us to look at the question of neighborhood specificity.
Yeah, well, I'm only bringing it up because it was raised at the hearing, and I didn't, I was looking for that in the report, so I just wanted to ask the question.
Within the nine square miles of the city, there are many opportunities for housing to compensate.
Yeah.
I was just curious what the building height was for MUC.
For mixed-use employment?
I'm sorry, MUE, yeah.
So it's interesting that you say that. It can be very high, and one of the trade-offs with this, so one certainty that you have in bringing this, these properties into the master plan is that you know more about the massing and the scale and the building that will be. So for example, the properties in pink that are already zoned mixed-use employment, those could be much taller. I'll get back to you on the exact number. Four stories, I think or so. But the applicant has proposed a few limitations. One is that they have proposed that the property identified in pink is a parking lot. So there's not going to be a big building nearby looming over neighbors or anything like that. And then the property in the residential, we know that that whole block face will be a medical office building, and it will be two stories, rather than the four stories are so allowed in mixed-use employment. So the trade-off that you're getting when you bring it into the master plan is you know more certainty of what it is. The property in pink could be much bigger and much taller than what you're getting. Also, when you develop this block face where the actual building will be, so again, this is parking lot, this is the medical office building, which will be the west facility, which will be the only medical office building. We have countless criteria in our code that require that the building be near the transit street and near the intersection, so it's going to be naturally pulled away from residential. So you're not, again, not going to have that two-story building.
Does it have any articulation standards in your design code at all for stepping, stepping the second story's back and, you know, creating a profile that's not so?
Are you talking about adjacent to the residential?
Not just the second story.
It doesn't overshadow the residential, that kind of thing. If you're going to do the zone change, I want to make sure it minimizes the impact of the adjacent single-family residences in the area, so.
And so, yeah, that, this will pull the building closer towards Division. No, we don't have a standard that the second story be stepped back. There is articulation standards, and there are different ways in which you can meet articulation, but not, we just have the minimum setback from residential zoning designation.
Right.
So we know at least that there will be that.
Okay.
We do have minimum required interior and rear yard setbacks. If a budding residential zone, 20 feet plus one foot additional yard setback for every one foot of building height over 35 feet.
Okay.
We don't, that's not, not the second story necessarily, it's a whole building that gets pushed back.
Laura, I may be up there a lot seeing doctors, but I'm not familiar with this law. What is the square or the rectangle behind the red area in these other buildings? Did you say they're medical offices?
Existing?
Yeah, I've not noticed it that side.
That's an existing building.
An existing building.
Does that belong to the hospital, or is that private?
It does.
So that gray area is existing hospital space?
The gray defines their existing master plan boundary.
Okay, thanks.
It used to be an orthopedic clinic, and then it became hospice, and then it became a couple of other things.
Okay, just wondering. Thanks.
Yeah, my son broke his leg. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other questions for staff before we go to the public hearing? Okay, so at this time, we will.
I think the applicant has a presentation for you as well.
Oh, that's right.
Another one?
Applicant. Applicant, it's your turn to speak.
I'm Stephanie Sloman with Harper Hoff Peterson Regalas. I'm the land use planner representing Providence Willamette Falls Hospital tonight. On my left is Mr. Russ Reinhardt, who is the CEO of Providence Willamette Falls Hospital. Thank you very much, Laura, for the thorough staff report and the additional findings on housing. We know that there are some issues the community cares about, and so we're here tonight to address some of those off the bat as part of our opening brief presentation. Russ will first talk about, more about the need for this request. That'll be followed by Josh Kolberg of PK Architects, who will discuss some of the site analysis that went into the location of the proposed MOB, medical office building and parking. And then Sherri Paris, who is the hospital's chief operating officer, will conclude our presentation with a discussion of the community benefits that this proposal will bring to the city. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Russ, and we will go from there.
Again, Russ Reinhardt, chief executive of the Willamette Falls Hospital, and first thing I want to say is that I can't think of a better way to spend your 55th birthday than with the planning commission.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Are you trying to butter us up? Where's the cake?
Yeah, no, no cake.
Oh, well, okay.
All right. So obviously, in our master plan call for a couple of medical office buildings, you're probably going to ask, you know, why now? We have two medical office buildings on our campus currently. They're both 100% occupied. I probably get a call almost a week from interested physicians, specialties, and so forth, looking to expand, want to come into the market, want to serve this market. We are in a growing community, and we serve a broader community. We serve the KMB, the Malala, Oregon City. They're all growing, as we all know, so Willamette Falls therefore needs to grow. And we need space to accommodate more physicians. We have actually under supply of primary care physicians in our service area. We do studies every couple of years, and one of the major needs that came up was access to primary care. So as we build this building, one of the major people that are coming into the building, one of the major tenants, is a primary care practice that's actually currently in the market with two and a half docs. They want to go to seven physicians. So we are going to expand our primary care rehab services in our facility. Has anybody been to rehab services in Willamette Falls? It's in the basement. It's actually at capacity. It's poor access. You have to cross the street to get to it and go down into the basement, if you can imagine these patients. We're going to move rehab services to the medical office building to expand that, enlarge that capability. We have a new cardiac rehab program that we brought in about a year and a half ago is already at capacity. It's in the back of rehab services, so they cannot expand anymore. So unless we move rehab services, we can't expand cardiac services. So we're going to expand our cardiac services as part of this. And then if you recall, I was in front of this planning commission a while ago, we put a child and adolescent psychiatry unit above our ER. They have an outpatient clinic that's in the hospital. They are at capacity. We need to serve these child, these children's and behavioral health patients. We need to enlarge that service. They're going to bring in nurse practitioners and do a much more robust service. So as we're looking, that, that's the why. Why do we need this? We need to expand. We have services that need to expand, and therefore, that's where we're looking for this medical office building. Josh Kolberg is going to talk about, and there's a lot of questions, we've been to the neighborhood associations about why are you going across division, why that spot versus, you know, two office buildings and so forth, and he'll touch on the location and why that makes sense much more. But that's the need. We need to expand. We need to bring in more physicians. We need to bring in more specialties. I've got a lot of other interests and other specialties that I'm not deliberately going to talk about yet, but it's bringing new services to our community in Oregon City. So that's the why.
So I'm going to change seats with Josh, who'll come up and present the site analysis for you.
Good evening. Josh Kolberg with PKA Architects. So we have a few slides to share with you this evening. Laura's report was really great, so some of this is a little bit of a repeat of what she presented, but we'll go through, and I'll answer any questions that you may have. Really quickly, again, Laura summarized this in her report, but the request is a reduction in total medical office space from 50,000 feet to 35,000 feet. There were a range associated that Laura mentioned, 40 to 50 and 30 to 35. And one other thing to note is that there's parking requirements for hospital use, and those are based on per thousand square feet of development, and those ratios are two to four cars per thousand. And that's important to note as well. So the number of off-street parking requirements is also being reduced. But we'll talk a little bit more in depth about those off-street parking requirements because that's one of the, the major issues that came up in a number of our neighborhood meetings. So as Laura mentioned, in the 2012 approved master plan, there were two sites that were identified for potential medical office use. When Russ contacted us and we started to look at the two different sites and look at the need that he outlined, it became clear that one building where you can co-locate as many services as necessary was the optimal solution, and so where can we best fit that, that building? So if you look at the east side, this is east of Division Street. I don't have the cursor, and I, I don't know if this is the laser.
Can, here's a.
So phase one of the master plan developed this parking lot, which is there today, and it roughly is about 56 spaces. And so the concept of putting roughly 35,000 square feet of medical office, this would be the approximate footprint for a building of that nature. But again, one of the concerns that Providence has, and they operate dozens and dozens of medical office buildings all across the west, is the need to have that adjacent parking for patients, because medical office use requires, or, or there's a lot of trips, there's a lot of people coming for appointments all throughout the day. And so having that adjacent parking is really important from a safety standpoint. You want those patients to be able to park in the lot and walk directly into the building and not have to cross public streets if at all possible. So development in this area of the building footprint could fit, but you'd have to reduce what's existing 56 spaces down to get access for a covered drop-off here. So you'd be looking at roughly 50 spaces, and 50 spaces is lower than the minimum that would be required for a 35,000 square foot building when you look at that ratio of two to four. And again, as we know, and as Providence knows from experience and wisdom, that the more parking spaces that you can supply, the better. So when you look at that ratio of two to four, the preference is going to want to be at the upper end of that echelon if at all possible, because we know that there's a lot of trips to these facilities. If you look at the analysis also from this standpoint, so like Laura mentioned, there's a number of master plan projects that are in the approved plan, an expansion to family birthplace, the main entry will get an overhaul, there's an outpatient surgery in the back. These projects will impact the current parking supply. They're going to reduce some parking that's currently here in front of the family birthplace. It's likely to reduce parking that's in the back, back here. And as we evaluate those reductions in parking, this east lot presents the best opportunity for making up that deficit. So if you can take this 56-space parking lot and expand the parking opportunities on this side of Division Street, it presents a really nice opportunity for making up for those deficits when future developments occur. So then when we look at the west, yeah, the west side of Division Street and the, the potential here, like Laura mentioned, the building is going to want to be facing Division Street, so as far away from the existing residential zone on this side. There is opportunity for multiple access points so that not just 15th or not just 16th would, would receive in, in and out. And also, the area, the area of this land, when you incorporate the two additional properties here, allows for the most off-street parking possible, up to, up to 145 spaces between these two spaces. And that presents a really great opportunity for safety of patients. And it also represents the best opportunity for preventing on-street parking. We know that currently, there's a, there's a, an issue with people parking on the street, and this opportunity represents the best opportunity for off-street parking and maximizing that count, so that patients, when they come to the medical office building, they have a place to park in a lot and walk directly into the building. So that is the slides that we had put together. Any, any questions? Any questions?
Actually, should we move on to Sherri?
I've got a question for you.
Yeah, sure.
On your design of the off-street parking site, you emphasize safety. One of the most dangerous places I visit is Fred Meyer's, their off-street parking. I mean, my God. But I visit Home Depot occasionally, and they've got a sidewalk right down the middle between the cars facing each other. You get out, you go to the sidewalk, you're free and clear. You don't have to be a contestant between automobiles, and I'm going to lose every time. What consideration have you given to pedestrian safety within this off-street parking area itself?
Yeah, well, that's a great question. So, the medical office building will have a patient drop-off point. So it will have a place for you to pull out of a lane and drop off a loved one or somebody in the passenger side directly on the sidewalk in the front of the building. So, you know, somewhere in this area here. So it'll have that ability to drop somebody off. But then after you park, you know, the parking has requirements for the configuration and the layout of the parking lot, which we would have to meet. And any opportunity that we have for sidewalks, or the ability to get people directly to the building without having to cross lanes of traffic within that off-street parking, we would take. So, that would be one way to do it.
I don't have the original map up here. What was the other area down here on 15?
These are currently MUE-zoned.
Does there are plans for that, other than parking?
No.
Parking lots.
That's just owned by the hospital.
So another parking question. I believe this was, I brought this up before. So where will the employees be parking? And then the second part of the question is, I'm not sure if I'm accurate on this. So what I have noticed in the medical profession is that you've got Dr. A. who comes to this building for a day, then he goes to some other building for another day someplace else. Is this going to be that kind of a building where people are only there for that day, and then they're moving around the community or moving around the Portland metro area? Because I'm thinking like iHealth Northwest, they got like five branches. I can't get an appointment with my doctor because he's over in wherever, but he will be in Oregon City on this day. So is that kind of how this is going to operate, or these are like permanent folks that they're there?
Well, for our rehab services and the behavioral health, they'll be there.
Like on a-
I can't get other-
No, no, I mean not, I mean, you know what I'm trying to-
But for the most part, they will be there.
Yeah, what I'm trying to understand, this is a five-day-a-week-
Correct.
As opposed to, like I said, iHealth, where, you know, my doctor goes here one day and he goes over there one day, because that would have made it, yeah. So that's what I was just trying to understand, is how the building will be operating. So rehab services, five days a week, they'll all be there.
Correct.
Everybody's, yeah.
Same with the, same with the-
Same, God, perfect.
Yep. As primary care, they tend to locate in one spot.
But, yeah.
Or specialists, and I can't control them, but-
No, I know.
The specialists kind of go between us and-
Well, you can.
-Burton Park. Well, not really. As far as employees, we tend to put the employees to the back. So when you look at this, the employee parking would be back in the far end, so that the patients have the prime-
The back of, the back of what, Russ?
Well, and I'm looking on the 16th Street, if you look where the, go to the north.
I see the little hand.
Right there, that area would be the employee parking.
Okay, so that would be employee parking and patient parking?
Well, it'd be employee, and then the patients would be closer to the building.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
And we have, yeah, sorry, we have closing remarks from Sherri.
Okay, very good.
Sherri's going to talk about, all about the criteria, right?
Well, I did, I know we have a few more people in the room, and so I did want to just kind of highlight a couple of things, and I had a few other pieces on parking as well, because I know that's a hot topic for folks. So I know many of you have experienced Willamette Falls as a patient or a visitor. I did want to just share a few things that you might not know, just as a quick reminder that we recently celebrated our 60th anniversary in the community, which is certainly a lot of changes since the hospital first established the site by five local physicians. Willamette Falls employs 650 caregivers and clean, high-wage jobs, and more than 500 providers are credentialed to work within our ministry. We expect to have care for more than 30,000 patients in our emergency department. We average about 48 patients a day, and we deliver more than 1,000 babies a year, certainly bringing a lot of joy to new moms and dads in the community. Donations to the foundation at Willamette Falls were more than 223,000. And about nine percent of that came from our employees, who are very committed to our work. The foundation supports the hospital in numerous ways. For those of you who may not know, we recently added 3D mammography for cancer screening for our patients. Our commitment to be in a good community partner is long and deeply held. In 2014, we recorded over $10.5 million in community benefits, so that includes free and reduced-cost patient care. And for a decade, we donated office space to the Children's Center, which serves to support mentally, physically, and sexually abused children. Ashley was able to go over there today and take a tour. Fabulous service for our community. We donate annually to the Oregon City Farmers Market to help families in the SNAP program to bring home fresh fruits and vegetables. We support the community through sponsorships, many of them you may know, the concerts in the park, the Clackamas Cove Triathlon, the Drug and Alkaphol Free Graduation Parties, and the First City Celebration. So just, you know, that's just a little bit about us. One of the things we know with the campus, as we were just discussing, is that parking is certainly a concern to everyone, and it does present, you know, unique challenges. We do take that very seriously. We do have a parking policy. Several years ago, we implemented a parking hotline, and we've asked people to report if they see any issues with our parking policy. Employees are asked to park, not on the streets, within three blocks of the campus, and we do have our security go around and look to make sure that we don't see employees doing that. And they are required to identify their cards through a little ticket that they put on their window. Other things that we're doing to help support and ease the way with the parking challenges is that we do offer all of our employees free TriMet passes, annual passes, which is a great benefit for them to use that service to come to the campus. And we're adding a bike rack to the campus, and then we just added back valet services to ease the way of our patients who are coming in and out of the hospital on the hospital side. So, you know, just a few things, because certainly want you all to know, even with this plan, which we think is a good one, that we'll pay continued high attention to the priority with parking. So as Oregon City and Clackamas County grows, as Russ was saying, Willamette Falls is caring for more people, and we're planning responsible growth to meet the community's needs. As we've mentioned before, you know, our request is really a reduction in the total amount of medical office building space than what our current plan allows for, and we believe will support responsible growth. The zoning and the master plan changes that we are requesting will continue the thoughtful planning to have accessible parking where we believe patients and visitors need it most.
I do have another question, based on some of the things you were just saying. I'm not sure if I heard it earlier. Does this fit your current needs, this building, or how far on into the future do you think that this new growth is going to help you? Because I know hospitals are constantly expanding. As you said, we're growing our communities here. So how far out will this work for you, or do you need to come back another two years?
No, no. Nope not. You know, that's a great question, but, you know, who knows? As the baby boomers age and so forth, as we grow on the campus. You know, our master plan is through 2021, and so we see this as getting us at least through 2021. Beyond that, who knows?
I have a thinking of growth for doctors coming in and not just patients, but-
We think this will serve us through that 2021 timeframe, and then who knows after that? As I hit my, that birthday, then I'll come back.
Are you saying you're one of those aging baby boomers that's going to need that rehab there?
It's a great question, but I really-
When was the last building construction out there? I was trying to remember that.
It was our child and adolescent psychiatry unit that came in.
Right, I knew that.
Before that, it was the ED, Emergency Department and our diagnosed imaging-
She knows them all.
She knows them.
That's what I said.
He lives down there, part-time.
Yeah. He's been down there a lot.
Yeah.
So I know a question that's been asked before, and let me ask it just one more time. I know that the hospital over the years, and matter of fact, you were mentioning the five people that started it, so do you remember, you probably weren't around when PACC was in existence, were you?
No.
But you know, yes. So, those of you that know PACC, you know what I'm talking about. The hospital has done some very careful planning over the years to look at its, you know, where it's going, what its growth projections. And so I think the question that I have for you again, is that knowing that you do this great planning, why hasn't there been any planning to build a parking structure as opposed to continually building surface parking lots? And I think you know that that's an issue that's been raised time and time and time again. Nobody wants to live next to a parking lot. So, again, with the beautiful, careful planning that you've done, you know, they don't get more, they don't get cheaper over time to build a parking structure, they just get more expensive. And so, seems to me, knowing that your master plan goes out to 2021, that as carefully as you guys planned, some money could have been socked away to, you know, to go up, because I'm looking at that lot across the street, and I understand, you know, you don't want people crossing the street, but I know at Legacy you have to cross the street, I know at OHSU, I take, I take public transportation there, so I'm crossing the street, and it's not, I mean, they do drive-through there, so go up.
And Josh actually just asked us the same thing, as we were relooking at our parking the other week, and, you know, we don't have it listed as an individual, you know, capital project for us today, but I think as we continue to look at that expansion that Laura already highlighted, that's in the master plan now from 20 to 21, we will need to look at, you know, do we have appropriate parking, and what would it look like on that side of the street? So certainly not to preclude that ever happening, but you're right, we don't have plans for it currently.
Is it something that you're going to be looking at?
You know, I'll answer that. I think two things Denise. One is, when you talk about a parking structure, and you talk about good stewards of money, obviously, surface parking is much, much less expensive. And honestly, even though we're part of Providence and we're a big outfit, we don't have unlimited resources, there's always demand, much more demand on capital than there is capital, to be honest. And so, as good stewards, obviously, this is, makes more financial sense. When you start talking about a parking structure, number one, no one wants to live next to a parking structure either.
Well, but it'll be on-
Parking lots much, you know, so you can put it out on the back.
I'm looking at the other side of the street.
Then I've got Trillium Neighborhood Association or Neighborhood, they don't want to see a parking structure back there. So it's a balance between stewardship and what do people want to be next to, and what makes most sense. So this, this plan makes more feasible sense as far as stewardship dollars.
But what I was getting at is, you know, wise use of land. So do we want to keep making pervious services of parking lots over time, or do we want to look at how we can minimize the impact of that on the environment, which is, has to do with stewardship, and go up instead of out?
I totally agree. I think ultimately, you talked about, you know, growth over the time, we are going to have to start looking at going out, and our buildings too.
Yeah. Because I mean, the ideal spot would be that lot that was on the first slide, where it's got, what, 140? I don't have it up on my screen right now, but I think it was 140 spaces, so you take that out of service for a little bit, you go up, and you can double it, triple it.
Okay, they're going to change their whole plans right now.
I know. Well, it's something, it's something that I-
Do you keep coming up?
Yeah, something that, again, it's come up, and it's come up, and it's come up, and I'm going to keep saying it, whether I'm sitting here or I'm sitting out there, because I think it's, I think it's something that we need to be thinking at as a community, where we're going with that use of the land. You know, we're not, we're not making any more land.
Yeah, and I would just reiterate that it's certainly not, it's not a like decision, because I know what you're saying, and everyone wants to use the land wisely, but just for the stewardship of the investment in the community, we feel like the medical office building and its configuration would be a better add for the community versus something different, you know.
And then how many, what's the percentage of employees that actually use TriMet?
Willamette Falls specifically? I don't know that I have those numbers. They sure do all like to get the pass. And I do see folks out there, but we haven't counted the numbers.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So at this time, we will proceed to the public testimony portion of the issue, and again, as I noted earlier, just for anyone who came in since the beginning of the meeting, if you're representing a neighborhood association, if you identify yourself as such, you'd be entitled to five minutes of speaking time, and for everyone else, three minutes, and if you can, please limit your time to that three minutes, that would be really great. First person to speak is Amber Holbeck.
Chair Kidwell, one point of clarification, our maximum height in mixed-use employment zoning designation is 60 feet, 6-0.
60?
Yes.
What is it adjacent to a residential zone?
60 feet, it's just that setback of, so you would be set back 55 feet if you were 60 feet tall.
Good evening, I'm Amber Holbeck. I represent the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce. Thank you Chair Kidwell and Planning Commission members. I'm proud to represent our chamber in support of the Providence Willamette Falls Medical Center master plan expansion request and land use zoning change. You know, our Willamette Falls Medical Center is a longtime health provider for our community and one of Oregon City's largest employers, and as our community grows, so do our medical needs. And at this location, between our community and Providence, those who have gone before us, we've invested a great deal, which serves a critical service to our current and future residents and visitors alike. The initial master plan, which was approved, included the development of two medical office buildings. Now, down just to just one, a new medical office building on campus increases access to the primary care, which you've already heard is a primary need, and specialty care, and improvement of access to outpatient services. These services do provide high-wage, clean jobs for Oregon City and help address healthcare needs of a growing Clackamas County. And of course, as planning commissioners, bless you, by the way. Of course, as planning commissioners, you're familiar with building codes requiring prescribed number of parking spaces depending upon the size and the use of the building. You know, the land being requested will be needed to accommodate that new medical office building, as well as significantly improved parking, not only for them, but also for main entrance users. You know, I think good parking lots that are relatively easy to access will likely cut down on improper street parking, and may even alleviate congestion and safety in that immediate area of the neighborhood. As you consider these requests, please note that a great deal has changed since 2012's master plan. Medical technology improves, and investments in that new tech were brought to Oregon City. Our city and our regional population grew, and now Oregon City is host to a regional resource in child and adolescent psychiatry. Now certainly, I won't disagree that this development will likely create disruption and encroachment on Oregon City's oldest neighborhood association, but I'm pleased that Providence, in an effort to minimize impact to their neighbors, has made several changes to respond to those concerns. I respect the need to protect one's neighborhood, and frankly, I believe that this is a reflection of that kind of tough pioneering spirit so closely associated with Oregon City. However, the pioneering spirit is also reflected in Oregon City's Medical Center, seeking the means by which they can provide the services to meet our community's health needs today, but more importantly, for the future. I'd just like to finish by saying a strong medical facility for our growing Oregon City is critical. Businesses that bring future living wage jobs to Oregon City want good schools, parks, infrastructure, and medical care. The Oregon City Chamber urges you to support the zone change and master plan amendment as submitted by Providence Willamette Falls Health, excuse me, Medical Center, and thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. The next person scheduled to speak is Francesca Anton.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Francesca Anton. I've been at 123 High Street since 1998, and I'm just starting my second year as Secretary of the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association, and I'm here on their behalf. I got voted to come. So I will read you our letter, and then I'll hand a copy to Laura with a couple of attachments. Dear Oregon City Planning Commission Members, During our Thursday, January 7th general meeting, there was extensive discussion concerning the application process taken by Providence Willamette Falls with a decision and vote to express our concerns to the Planning Commission this evening. To begin, and as you well know, the planning process has a beginning, a middle, and an end. We don't know if Providence reviewed our Oregon City Comprehensive Plan when they first began thinking about further expanding across Division Street. We consider our comp plan a beautifully constructed vision of how we can proceed together, one that encourages us to include each other as we move into the future and our- that encourages us to include each other as we move into the future in our attempt to create and recreate a city that is healthy for all and worth living in. We wonder if it might have been following our comp plan appropriately to have come to both the city and our neighborhood before they even started drawing plans to further expand across Division Street into our residential neighborhood. This would have been a valuable discussion and a great act of community building. It would have been a true exercise in democracy, a chance to learn while actually using our comp plan to process the idea openly and with devotion to those who are coming after us. In Goal 1 of the statewide planning goals, it states, "Develop a citizen involvement program that ensures the opportunity for citizens to be involved in all phases of the planning process." Goal 1.1, Citizen Involvement Program of our own comp plan states, "Implement a citizen involvement program that will provide an active and systematic process for citizen participation in," again, "all phases of the land use decision-making process to enable citizens to consider and act upon a broad range of issues affecting the livability, communities sustainability, and quality of neighborhoods and the community as a whole." All phases. In the January 4th staff report, the report states the applicant complied with Goal 1.1 because three meetings were held. These meetings were held well after the first phase of planning had begun, and because of this, we do not believe Providence understands the specific intent of all phases part of our and the state's comprehensive plans, and perhaps the planning staff overlooked the same. In part, this is why our June 4th meeting was filled, standing room only, with neighbors who were almost entirely concerned their neighborhood integrity would be compromised with Providence's further expansion across Division Street. They were also sincerely and without malice frustrated with their feeling of loss and inability to impact or control their own ability to provide community safety and livability where they live. For the most part, we believe Providence's submission of their report on our June 4th meeting to you does not accurately reflect this frustration. And finally, their submission fails to account for the many times the three staff answered the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association members' questions with statements, not inferences, that to expand building and parking areas on the existing property would be, quote, "too expensive," quote. In fact, in our notes, one staff present at the meeting admitted it was much less expensive to build on the west side of Division than further develop the existing site. We think this is a serious omission that should be questioned by each member of the Planning Commission. We are very concerned Providence is making their application to further their presence on the west side of Division, primarily due to their perceived desire to keep their expansion costs down. We fully appreciate that we all must strive to live within our budgets, but when we are, again, being asked to accommodate another expanding public facility that will also remove residential properties from our neighborhood, we hope you can understand our legitimate concern. Should Providence's goals of keeping their costs down while knowingly increasing their future income by expanding into our residential neighborhood take precedence over our desire to maintain the integrity of our neighborhood, we believe our own Oregon City Comprehensive Plan tells us that this is something we should not have to do. The staff report also fails to address the relevant Comprehensive Plan Policy 10.1.1, which states, "Maintain the existing residential housing and establish older neighborhoods by maintaining existing comprehensive and zoning designations where appropriate." Should I, I'm almost done, should I keep going? Thank you.
Finish.
We believe this should be relevant to the application before the commission, but has been completely unaddressed in the staff report. The policy should prohibit the requested zone change and comp plan amendments for the two houses on 16th Street. A second relevant Comprehensive Plan Policy reflects our feeling that our lower-income neighbors should not have to bear the burden of allowing Providence to save-
Keep going, keep going.
-on their proposed expansion by tearing down their houses to add surface parking. Goal 10.2, Supply of Affordable Housing, states that we should, quote, "provide and maintain an adequate supply of affordable housing," and Policy 10.2.1, Retain Affordable Housing Potential by Evaluating and Restricting the Loss of Land Reserved or Committed to Residential Use. When considering amendments to the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map, ensure that potential loss of affordable housing is replaced. We do not believe the staff report provides adequate proof that the loss of the six affordable housing units these homes on 16th and 15th represent will be replaced. Keep in mind that most of the families that have been displaced by the landslide have not found new affordable housing yet. And for a parking lot? We wonder if Providence might explore the use of parking techniques such as podium parking under their existing office buildings so they do not have to tear down our housing stock and displace our lower-income residents, and we have an attachment to go with that. Finally, we notice Providence's application makes several responses to the comp plan sustainability requirements, and yet, in the larger scheme of our goals for community sustainability, we believe Providence is failing to acknowledge something very important. Unlike the Portland metro region, Oregon City is a pivot of a wide swath of mostly rural lands with small municipalities dotting the map. Wouldn't it be more sustainable for these growing communities to have their own clinics, similar to the Providence Medical Group in Canby, which, by the way, is located in a commercial area of the city? Why is our small neighborhood being asked to shoulder the burden of a growing rural population outside our city? Thank you.
Did you submit a copy of that?
Yes, I will, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next person to testify is Tiffany Gillespie.
Hello. Tiffany Gillespie, I'm an Oregon City resident, I'm also a homeowner in the McLaughlin Neighborhood, actually just down the street from the hospital. I'd like to voice my support for the hospital's expansion. I feel, as well as my husband feels, who couldn't be here tonight, that they are doing this in a very responsible and thoughtful way. We've reviewed all of the extensive findings, both in the staff report as well as all the public information available, that indicate a negligible impact on traffic and housing with these changes. We are both satisfied with the evidence as it's presented, and want to voice our support for this change.
Can I ask, did you say you were in the McLaughlin Neighborhood?
Yes, I own the property at 741 Division Street.
And did you attend their meetings? You weren't done? I'm sorry, I just was trying to clarify.
She has property in there.
Yes, I do, I own the property at 741.
But I was just asking, did you attend their meetings?
No, I did not.
Okay.
Thank you. The next person to testify, and excuse me, I'm not sure if this is Jett?
He looks like Jeff West.
Jeff, Jeff West?
Yeah.
Okay. Karen Maury?
Sorry, I'm here for a friend here.
My name's Karen Maury, I'm a resident of the Rivercrest Neighborhood, so I only get my three minutes. And I'm notorious for my history lessons, so here we go.
What neighborhood?
Rivercrest.
Rivercrest, okay.
She's not representing them.
I reviewed all of the written materials, and went back and watched the previous hearing. There's a couple of issues, I'm not sure how clear they've been made, and I want to kind of go into them. And I will say, first of all, I'm a former volunteer at Providence Willamette Falls Medical Center. It is a non-spoken facility. I have walked that neighborhood significantly in order to take smoke breaks, and I've always very much enjoyed it, and I've been intrigued by it. One thing to note, it is not part of the McLaughlin Conservation District. It is a portion of the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association, because the Buena Vista Neighborhood Association, due to lack of interest, was merged into the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association. That area is known as Buena Vista, it was a later addition to the city. As far as anyone's able to determine, the name Buena Vista was a great marketing ploy by the realtors who started selling those lots. The houses, there are a few historically significant houses, none of which are near to this development. Most of the houses are modest bungalows that were constructed from about 1912 to 1925. Interestingly, a significant number of those houses are still sitting on their original lot, which is a full eighth of a full block. I disagree with Denise, there is significant room for additional development up there. There is some infill, looks to be mostly 1940s, and then again in 1970s, but if you really look at that neighborhood, there are very small homes on very large lots, which I suspect if they're affordable, are rentals, because I doubt that buying that land and paying the taxes on it is all that affordable this day and age. One other thing that I, and actually, it was brought back up just now, during the original master plan, there was a significant contingent of neighbors from Davis Road and from Trillium, which is a development behind the hospital. Trillium unfortunately was also built at a time when you got to build where it was a little too steep, and Trillium has had some issues. Those neighbors were very concerned over adding weight to the existing site, and adding more impermeable surface so that there would be more runoff into their neighborhoods. They also were absolutely opposed to a multi-level parking structure that was actually in one of the original concepts. And just on a final note, as a firsthand, and Mr. Mahoney brought this up at a previous meeting, I had knee surgery several years ago and had to go through rehab, I actually had to learn to walk again. And having to park at the medical office building one, and go on my crutches, or with my cane, or without my cane, in fear over to the existing rehab services was atrocious. Providence Willamette Falls Hospital provides excellent service, close to home, I need, you know, the neighborhood needs that service, those jobs, and that accessibility, and I think the hospital has done an excellent job in creating a minimum impact on that neighborhood.
Is Trillium below the current hospital?
Yeah, where you go, past Gillum Park.
The next person scheduled to speak is Jay Pearce.
My name is Jay Pearce, I'm a resident of the McLaughlin Historic Neighborhood, the portion down closer to the center of town. And I'm coming before you to, I guess, take exception to the notion that there's a reference in this Comprehensive Plan to preserving the residential character of a historic neighborhood as the basis for the objection that you heard from the Neighborhood Association, I take a different view. There are exemption and waivers that already exist within our existing zoning plan, for sure. Much closer to the heart of the historic neighborhood, there are things like a beauty salon, a massage parlor, a vagrant shelter, plunked right in the middle of what could be and should be considered the heart of the historic district, as I said. So, the proposed change being on the very edge of the Neighborhood Association on property already owned and operated by the applicant, seems to me to have no residential or historical impact to what they are proposing, and it's been quite clearly laid out by the staff here. I'm totally in favor of permitting the development of productive healthcare services, much-needed healthcare services, on the applicant's own property. I think that needs to be emphasized here, it's not as if they're buying up everything in sight and trying to create a new zone. The properties that they're dealing with are ones that they own and operate, and the residential nature of being able to shift population onto buildable lots in other areas is already underway. There's new construction of 12th and Washington, for instance, there's new housing being built within the McLaughlin Historic Neighborhood already. So, I really don't think that's a valid comparison here. And if permitted use like this is not allowed to change, then we need to be consistent and review all permitted use within the historic neighborhood, kind of referencing some of the properties that I was describing before. I'd rather see some teardowns and some residential homes put in too, if we're going to do the infill that we're talking about. So, I'm very much in favor of this development, I think that the Comprehensive Plan, the master plan amendments, and the zoning amendments should be granted.
The next person to speak is Michael McCauley.
How are you? Mike McCauley, Trillium Park Estates, I actually live behind the hospital in the landslide area, so we're actually just fine. I didn't plan on speaking tonight, I came to see actually what was going on, and I started reviewing some documents, and I guess I had more questions than anything else. One of the things that I read was statewide goal number 12, the transportation documents, and I was reading the plan review that was submitted by the hospital, actually in 2011. Some of the things that they addressed were intersections at Redland and Anchor, and also the Malala 7th intersection. What they didn't address was the 15th and Division intersection, which is where the hospital is at. And right now, I go through that intersection every day, and it's already a nightmare because of the entrance to the hospital, the ending of 15th Street, Division Street, and then also the entrance to the medical center parking structure is right there, but it's offset by about 50 feet. So, I guess my concerns were, are these going to be addressed at the time of the construction of their new facility? Are they going to take care of the traffic issues? Another issue we have is where Division actually meets Anchor, it becomes a hairpin turn, and I see near accidents there almost every day because of poor signage, poor signaling, and things like that, so. And then the other issue I had was, in their master plan, although in the layout that they had earlier, they had a little red circle with a line going through it for one of their medical office buildings, is that actually going to be removed from zoning, where they're saying they're going to take two medical office buildings and turn it into one? Are they giving up their possibility of building that other medical office building? I mean, is that actually being removed and taken off the plan and taken out of zoning? And that's something I would want to make sure is happening, have that confirmed. Thank you.
The last person I have signed to speak on this issue is Betty Mumm.
Time's up. Time to go. Thank you again for allowing me to speak to you guys tonight about this. This is my former employment, and it's very dear to my heart. I have put a lot of time into Willamette Falls, worked there 25 years. The Anchorway Road is actually, it used to be called the Ambulance Shoot, if you guys can remember back then. So, I want to encourage your approval of this tonight, the rehab center especially is going to be, patients will be so grateful for you to not make them go park at the parking lot that they have to park now, and go to the elevator, and also to remind you that our hospital serves the rural districts, Malala, Canby, Estacada, they all come in to our hospital, and there's already a building on it, and they have good wage jobs, and I think Providence is very thoughtful with their plan. Providence is very thoughtful with their plans, and I would strongly encourage you to approve. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have no one else signed up for testimony at this time. If you'd like to speak, come on up and identify yourself, and then you can fill out a card.
Before we close the public hearing, Laura, could you answer those questions that were raised? I think they were already presented, but maybe just go over.
The applicant might do that, too.
Okay. Or they will, yeah, because I think you said it in your staff report.
Hello, my name is Dorothy Dalsred. I didn't expect to speak. I just came to kind of watch in observancy what was going on in my surrounding neighborhood. My concern is a tremendous amount of water runoff that's going to come from surface parking lots. I saw a topography map and the natural resource map, and it did not seem to mimic the trees that were on the lots existing, so I assume that you're going to either replant or not. My biggest concern was more of all the other pink and changing the whole zoning. I think that's the next agenda. But not knowing the tax status between mixed commercial or mixed use and residential, are those residential and people right now, if they're rezoning that area, are they going to have to burden an extra tax burden? And again, I don't know even the beginning of that question. Those were my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Very good. Thank you. So if you can fill out a card, Laura, that'd be great. And we'll take rebuttal from the applicant at this time.
Could we put the map back to that original map of the pink areas?
Happy birthday, Russ.
I have not seen anybody bring a cake in.
I already asked for the cake. I asked for the cake.
Obviously, nobody was moved.
I'd stay for the Scotch.
I was hoping the right team would call. I don't know.
So just a suggestion, if you can address any of the questions that were raised during the public testimony, that would be great.
Are we getting Laura's map back up here?
Just working on it.
Okay. I just want to get it on the right clicker.
Technical difficulties.
Laura's looking for the vicinity map that shows the existing zoning and the proposal. That's, thank you, Laura. I'm going to start off and respond to the comments and testimony we heard from a strictly planning perspective, the approval criteria which you need to consider, and then Russ will follow up with a statement from the hospital. I heard four key themes throughout the testimony this evening and from your questions, and I'm going to group them and respond to them as such. First of all, a comment was raised about the lack of citizen involvement that has been made for the public for this proposal regarding statewide planning goal number one. Statewide planning goal number one applies to local jurisdictions, how they approach planning, it does not apply to private developers. That said, Providence complied with the city's requirement to have a neighborhood meeting with the Neighborhood Association, and went above and beyond and met two more times with the neighborhood, also presented to the Citizen Involvement Committee, and then just this past week, had an open house where notice was given to all of the neighbors to attend. So I would contend that Providence has really made an effort to involve and try to understand the concerns of the community. In fact, after the first community meeting, Providence elected to remove two properties from consideration based on the concerns they heard. Secondly, the notion of can Providence keep all of its future growth as anticipated through the year 2021 on its existing site? The question was raised, why not structured parking? Russ and Sherry spoke to some of the reasons for that in terms of stewardship, financial stewardship of Providence. Also, I wanted to point out to you, from a planning perspective, for this zone, the minimum FAR is .25. Providence is achieving an FAR of .56, more than double the height, the massing that is looked for in this district. So I would put to you, what more should you require of a private property owner to exceed your standards? And then also related to the expansion of the hospital into the neighborhood, certainly Providence hears and is concerned about people's thoughts about the neighborhood. I need to point out, as you can see from this map, that the west side of Division is predominantly already mixed-use employment. The yellow area is the neighborhood, the residential zoned area, the pink is mixed-use employment. And while there are homes there today, that is not the city's vision for this area. The city has already made its decision, this is to be a mixed-use employment area. All of those homes that are there now are non-conforming uses, lawful non-conforming uses that have to comply with city standards for those uses. They could not be built there today. The four homes that are MUE, that Providence owns, those are not even considered part of the city's residential land inventory. They remain in use as homes. Providence has elected to do so, to allow those to stay as rental units. They are under no obligation to do so. The two homes that are in the yellow residential area, those are really, that is the crux of the issue if you're thinking about loss of housing. So yes, those are two lots that are zoned, that would be rezoned, and two units, existing units, that would go away. I believe that staff has shown beyond a doubt that the city has more than adequate housing supply. There are many opportunities, and this rezoning really will be de minimis. Understanding, though, that the impacts citywide, maybe, you know, as Denise pointed out, how does this affect the neighborhood specifically? As Providence goes forward with a specific development, and this is the third point that I've heard people talking about, what's this going to look like? Why don't we know now? Well, in the previous application that you heard, Jonathan Mackler stated, things go in order. This is one of those things, you go in order of figuring out what your site needs are, your comprehensive plan, your zoning designation, and then you do the hard site planning. That will be reviewed by the city, the actual development plans, at which time a new traffic study will be submitted. The questions about safety and capacity around the intersection will be addressed at that time. Issues of stormwater runoff into Trillium, that will be addressed at that time as well. The final point I want to make from a planning perspective before Russ will finish up for us is the question of when will this stop, the expansion stop? This master plan is through the year 2021. It takes off the second MOB, that will come out of the square footage that's approved. Any plans after that, as Russ said, they don't know. Whenever that point is again, a new master plan is desired, it would come back to the Planning Commission and the City Commission again for approval of what a future vision might be.
Very good. Thank you.
I think Stephanie addressed most of the issues that I heard that came through kind of the themes. But obviously, one of the themes I heard or one of the concerns is Anchorway is Division and Seven, and is 15th and Division. And I share those concerns. We've talked to the city over the years, and we would dearly love to come up with some way to help those two intersections and clean up Anchorway and clean up that corner, but we all know that takes dollars and a lot of us that we don't have. The 15th and Division, I would like to address. If you think about it right now, if you look at the corner of 15th and Division on the south side, there's no sidewalks, right? There's nothing there. And if we, for approved, as we move forward, we're going to clean up that intersection, put in sidewalks, half-street improvements all along, and there's also no sidewalks. When you go down Division to the north, there's no sidewalks along that whole section, basically across from our parking lot, and that'll be cleaned up with this. So I think that'll address some of those concerns, and we would like to work with the city to really make it a much more user-friendly intersection there, whatever that means. I don't know how that's going to look, but we would like to do that. And as Stephanie says, we are giving up the other side, the other MOB, so I think somebody addressed that concern, but we are giving up the second MOB. So will it be in the next master plan? When Tommy talked about growth, maybe we'll come back. But then again, we have to come through this commission to satisfy you that we're growing. Last thing I just leave is, I've been there 23 years, I don't know that people realize that, and I think we've gone out of our way to work with the neighborhood, and I understand the concerns, and growth is always scary, but we want to be good neighbors. We keep our employees off the street, that doesn't mean I can keep our visitors and patients off the street, but we keep our employees off the street. And that was one of our big things when we did the EV remodel, is people wanted our employees off the street, and we do that. And they do get ticketed if they're on the street. So we have been good neighbors, we want to work with the neighborhood, and we think this is the best plan moving forward for all of us. So thank you very much for hearing us.
Thank you. So at this time, the public hearing portion of this issue will be closed, and we'll move to commission discussion.
The only thought I had, I put a big star to it, and you mentioned it again, as someone who comes up Anchor all the time and does that hairpin, I keep wondering how any ambulance makes it up there. That's not really responsible of a hospital several blocks away, is it? That's more city, the anchor and the hairpin curve, you know what I'm talking about?
So when they, when they implement each phase of construction with their detailed development plan, they'll have to look at the transportation impacts, if they make a large development that has transportation impacts, that would potentially affect that intersection, they have to do something.
But if it's several blocks away, I was asking, a development or the hospital's not really responsible for three or four blocks away, is it?
Only if they're doing something really big.
I see.
So with all development, they would do a transportation study. That study would be reviewed by John Rublinger, our consultant, to verify that it's correct.
So when you say really big, does the MOB qualify for real, big enough?
John is here and can answer detailed questions for you.
That is a forum. Step check.
Except we closed the public hearing, and that'd be new information, so I don't know.
I guess it would stand reason to me, building a 35,000 square foot building would require traffic evaluation.
There would definitely be a study, and we have standards for what that study must entail and which intersections that they evaluate.
John can recap material that's already in the record without reopening the record. So there wouldn't be a problem with John doing that as a consultant for the city.
I think Anchorway is a little bit outside the scope. I did want to, I did want to say for the record that I am aware that a member of the Transportation Advisory Committee, who also happens to be an engineer, had made a suggestion to the hospital about how it might be possible to realign the intersection to make it work better for them and for the community, and I'm hoping that he continues to bring that, will bring that forward, because I thought it was a really good idea. But for the record, I did want to also say that in regard to goal one, the commission may be aware that, I would have to say this in defense of the hospital, that Renee King went out of her way to schedule additional meetings with the Neighborhood Association that were requested, and that was up over and beyond the call of duty. And I do not have any concerns about whether or not goal one was met or not, because I believe that it was. I personally would have attended the meeting on Wednesday, but I was a little bit concerned about ex parte context, so I did not attend. But I did, I wanted to go as a resident of the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association. I know that in addition, if this is any comfort to the audience, that when they begin and their site plan and design review, they have already indicated that they plan to involve the Neighborhood Association in the early stages of that process. And I think that, again, that's another good way to have compatibility and look at issues that maybe they haven't thought of, because you've got people in the neighborhood who live there who know things. So I think that that's very positive, and that's been a very positive working relationship with the Neighborhood Association that I am aware of. So I just wanted the other commissioners to know that that's been going on sort of behind the scenes.
Paul?
Well, I don't have any problem with this request. I'm going to support it. I think that we've run into a situation that's been maybe a little bit overplanned, and I think the hospital's made a responsible request, and I don't think the impact on the surrounding neighborhood is significant enough to deny this. I think that the findings through the testimony that's been offered here tonight and the collective wisdom of the Planning Commission will bear this out. So I'm going to support this, and I'm not much of a motion maker, so I'll leave that up to the intellects on the board here.
To the what?
Did I say intellects?
Oh, the intellects. Oh, that includes you, though. That includes you.
He wasn't trying to insult anybody.
Zach?
It's a good, it's a good application. Generally, there's lots of good things about it. I don't, I don't like losing those two homes. It sticks to me a little bit, but especially coming from what we're coming from, which was 50,000 square feet down to 35,000, and the other concessions and the efforts made by the applicant, I think this could be good for the city.
Paul?
Yep. I have two concerns, and I echo Zach's concern for the loss of affordable housing. Oregon City is one of the few cities that still has affordable housing left to provide for people, and the incremental loss of affordable housing is a little bit disconcerting for me. But given the fact that a lot of this area is already zoned for the hospital use, then, you know, the vision has already been, you know, that ship has already sailed, I guess. And then the other concern that I had was the neighborhood compatibility issue with, in terms of building design, and making sure that when you do buildings on this side, when they integrate with the neighborhood, that they do, that they are articulated adequately and they have adequate height, that hopefully they won't be 60 feet high. I don't think the size of the lot would allow for that, but hopefully they'll be small enough to integrate themselves in with the neighborhood and be good neighbors, which I think they will be. And that, and of course, those concerns are tempered with, you know, your good planning and the amount of care and time that you've taken on this plan, and so I do, I support it as well.
Tom?
I agree with everything they've just said, and I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead.
You're going to be the intellectual tonight.
But he saved the best.
It's about time.
He saved the best for last, of course.
Did you have some comments to make before I make the motion?
Do I not ever have comments? Please, I'm keeping my record going here.
I'll get back to you in 15, 20 minutes.
It won't be 15 or 20 minutes. As I said before, that I have appreciated the work that the hospital has done to involve the Neighborhood Association, you know, it could always be more, but I think it was, I think it was better than many applicants that the Neighborhood Association has dealt with. And I certainly, as a planning commissioner and as a resident of the Neighborhood Association, appreciate that, because I have found that through discussion, compromise and agreement is readily available, and that's always the best way to go. I support the construction of the medical office building. It's on a lot that's already planned and zoned. It is, again, it was a previous rehab facility, children's center, hospice, doesn't have, it's not going to have any additional impact that it doesn't already currently have, except right now it's not really being utilized, so it will have a little bit more impact. When this area was rezoned, this was not a part of the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association. It was still outside of our neighborhood that I currently live in, and I would have to say that if we had an opportunity, we would have had an opportunity to participate if it had been in our neighborhood, but you know how it is, out of sight, out of mind, it's not in your neighborhood, so let the neighborhood over there worry about it. And then subsequent to that 2004 comp plan update, this was put into our neighborhood as one of the people testified, because that neighborhood has, had been inactive since the last comprehensive plan update prior to 2004. So with that in mind, I don't like parking lots. You know, as I said, I'm not really supportive of having surface parking lots, but be that it may, I think we, I've adequately put the bug in the hospital's ear to be thinking about this in the future. I can support everything of this application, except I cannot support the zone change. I don't, I don't see that we need to replace two houses with a parking lot, and I think that the parking that they're already proposing on the pink side there with the red box is going to be adequate, so that's the only part of it I don't support. I agree with Zach and Paul on the loss of housing. It may seem de minimis to this in a citywide context, but in terms of this neighborhood, it is not de minimis.
Okay. Well, the only thing, I think I generally support this application, and as Paul said, the separation of Division Street is kind of a ship that's already sailed, that's already been encroached upon. been encroached upon. One day, I can visualize that both sides of the street will be developed in a sensitive way that will be complementary to the hospital. The loss of the housing is somewhat of a concern, but I do think if the houses are worth saving, it can be relocated, and if there's property in that neighborhood, that may be a possibility. I know there's at least a couple construction companies that deal with housing relocations, so that may be an option, but I think on balance, I'll support this.
We can require it. Yeah, no, I mean, it would be great if we had some sort of provision. No, I think it's a great idea.
Good idea.
The other thing that I wanted to say lastly before we, before Tom makes his motion, is that I don't, I did not hear any testimony that indicated that this was in the historic conservation district of the McLaughlin neighborhood. It's only in the McLaughlin neighborhood, not part of the conservation district.
Jay Pearce.
Yeah, so I can't remember who said it, but I just wanted to clarify that it was, it's not.
I could reminisce about this hospital for a long time because I had one of my children born there and had knee surgery there, and I was the architect for the birth center, and I was the architect on--
You don't remember that we worked together on that?
The nursing unit renovation and for the, down in the basement, that vacant basement, when we built a mock-up of the patient room, full-size.
The red light is on.
It was--
He gets to do it because at the first hearing, I got to reminisce about being the planner on the birthplace with Charles.
Am I talking loud enough here?
Thank you. And I'm not going to reminisce at all because I don't like needles.
Tom, you're on.
I move that we approve PZ 15-02, amendment to the comprehensive plan, ZC 15-04, zone change, and CP 15-02, master plan amendment.
I second.
Yay.
All right. Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner Hankin?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?
As I stated, I support everything, but I do not support the zone change, and since you put the motion together, unfortunately, I'm going to have to vote no, because I can't separate my vote by PC 15-02 or CP 15-02. So I vote no. Sorry.
Commissioner Guio?
Aye.
Sheriff Kidwell?
Aye.
Motion passes, and the city commission hearing will be February 17.
Okay, and thank you, everyone, for their participation. And we will--
Are we okay with moving ahead, or do we--
I said we just deny the next one.
No, that's okay. That's okay. As I said, if I had, if we had been able to separate it, I would have supported the other two.
I don't know. Are we going to take a break?
Yeah, whatever you want to do.
Laura, how long till you got to change the tape?
20 minutes.
Wow.
Well, change it now. Change it now.
Okay, let's take a five-minute break.
Okay, I'll check the score.
Okay, we are back to order.
Somebody learns how to sleep with his eyes open.
The next item on our agenda is ZC 15-03, zone change, and PZ 15-01, comprehensive plan amendment, and this is related to the proposed Maple Lane development, master plan and comprehensive plan amendments. We're going to dispense with the reading of the script since we haven't seen anybody come in since the last reading, and I enjoyed it so little last time.
Are you sure nobody wants him to read it again? I mean, he just loves doing this.
No. Do any of the commissioners have any declarations for ex parte communication or visit of the site? Anything of that nature?
I have been by the site on numerous occasions, including since the last meeting.
I've been by the site a few times, but I haven't talked to anybody.
Nothing to add.
Same here. Nothing to add. Other than driving past the site almost every day, I have nothing else to declare. Does anyone in the audience have any questions for the commissioners on their declarations? Seeing none, we will move ahead with the staff report.
Thank you. Laura Torey with the planning department. So the city received an application for a zone change, an amendment to our comprehensive plan for properties located generally by Beaver Creek Road and Maple Lane Road, as shown on the aerial photo on the screen. So we'll talk through each of them first. There's a variety of zoning designations and comprehensive plan designations on site on the screen. You can see that it consists of medium-density residential zoning, comprehensive plan designations, as well as low-density residential comprehensive plan designations. The applicant has proposed to change both of those comprehensive plan designations to mixed-use corridor. In addition, the applicant has proposed to change the zoning designation of the site. Mixed bag of zones are 10, 6, 3.5. You got a lot of variety there. The applicant has proposed to go to MUC 2, which is a subsection of mixed-use corridor. The applicant has proposed a few limitations with this application. First is they have proposed to exclude some uses that are otherwise permitted or conditional from being on-site. Some of these exclusions help lower the transportation, the potential transportation impact on site. In addition, the applicant has proposed a trip cap. So they figured out how many automobile trips would be allowed if the current site was developed with the existing zoning designation. So we're ignoring what's there now, and we're just looking at the existing land and how it could be developed, and they have proposed to keep, figure out how many trips that is in the morning and then in the evening. So it's 128 a.m. peak hour trips and 168 p.m. peak hour trips, and they're saying that they're not going to change, that they're not going to go above those trips at all. So when each development comes in, we will analyze the previous applications that have been reviewed for the site, the current proposal, and make sure that we keep a running tally of those trip caps. We'll analyze those both with our land use applications as well as our business licenses. There's a condition of approval. I've proposed some modified language slightly that's before you in a packet. It is this nice thick packet here. It's the first page. There's some red languages for revised conditions of approval. In addition, the applicant has, so we've been here before, right? The last planning commission, one of the requests was that if they were to amend the trip cap after an alternate mobility standard or corridor study had been adopted, which would go before planning commission and city commission, that they could come back and increase the trip cap as a type-two or type-three process. Well, the applicant has withdrawn that request. So that means that they have the trip cap. The next step would be for someone to do a corridor study or alternate mobility plans. Those go before--
Someone?
Well, I'll get to that in just a second.
Oh, okay.
Somebody, somewhere. That goes before planning commission and city commission for adoption. Then, if the applicant wanted to increase the trip cap, although I don't know if we have a sense that they actually do, then they would have to come back before planning commission and city commission again, so that would be another time to remove the trip cap or modify it in any particular way. So they're going through a type-four process now. If they want to change anything, also a type-four process. Are there any questions on the trip cap? How we created the trip cap? We went to a bit more detail last time? Okay. They're not proposing to do anything on-site. If they want to turn any dirt on-site, that requires additional review. So if they wanted to do anything at all, we have code requirements for what the buildings ought to look like and street standards and so forth, and they'll have to go through that public review process before anything happens. This development application is just for amendment to the comprehensive plan and amendment to the zoning as well.
Laura, do you make a trip cap? I mean, just, is that based on the building and what its use is? Or are you just going to tell people, "Sorry, you can't come in here now because we've met our cap for the day"?
Oh, you mean, so when we're running this tally, when we get to the top?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do. We say, "I'm sorry, we have this analysis," and it's obviously public record.
It's a planning process, not once it's developed, we are not going to be counting cars coming into a parking lot. It'll say, "Okay, you're allowed, you're allowed up to--
I think you should.
--up to X thousand square feet of this type of use."
And this is based on the usage right now that's being projected, right?
Correct. It's based on the zoning of the properties right now.
Existing zoning, so we're ignoring the bus facility that's there and the church and all that. It's the existing zoning.
Okay, thanks.
So we had a couple of issues. We had a revised staff report that came out a week ago. Hopefully, it addressed all of the issues. We re-noticed the application, amended the noticing error again, sorry for that. Also, we, in the revised staff report, you did see findings for compliance with our state planning goals and any other applicable documents. There was concerns that were brought up at the last planning commission hearing regarding steep slopes and tree protection and stream protection and stormwater and different environmental things. So this, the statewide planning goals require the city to adopt code protections, and we've done that. So we have a natural resource overlay district, and we have a geologic hazards overlay district for steep slopes and landslides and things like that. And when development occurs, that's when we review applications to see how those environmental concerns are being addressed.
That would include erosion?
Exactly. It would. So we don't, there's no turning of the dirt at this moment, so there's no environmental review at this moment. There is findings in the staff report. We looked at the proposed subdivision layout, which again is a hypothetical thing that they're not actually proposing to do, and it did address the environmental overlays in there as well. Traffic impacts, obviously, there's a lot of discussion about this, and in particular, the intersection of Highway 213. Because there is a trip cap, they're not proposing to increase the transportation impact of the site, and we will review what the transportation impact of the site is with each land use application and with each business license submittal. Now, say you approve this application, the city commission does too, now the applicant wants to come in for development. We would be looking at what our TSP says about the intersection of Highway 213 and Beaver Creek Road. What are the improvements identified? What about this mobility study that's in there? And if they put, if they do a large enough development, then they would have to start to do, to implement those things. So the first one in the door with a significant impact on this intersection permitted use would have to address the requirements of the TSP, which includes some queue lengthening, some signage, and this $100,000 mobility study. With that, we recommend approval of planning files ZC 15-03 and PZ 15-01. And then the other things that I wanted to enter into the record, so we received quite a bit of information from the applicant as well as the public, since we sent out the planning commission agenda. That's all in this packet. There's also some findings that the applicant did provide before we sent out the planning commission agenda, but I forgot to attach them, and that's in this packet. And then I wanted to add my PowerPoint into the record as well.
So who was the someone?
The someone of what?
You mentioned that someone would have to do this study. Who's the someone?
It's whoever is first in the door. It could be this applicant if they want to build first.
It's not us, though.
No.
It could be. We are currently trying to identify partners and funding sources to do that work. It's something that has to occur.
Absolutely.
So if you want to be a partner, you can be a part of that.
I have no money.
Bob has money.
I think Bob's got the money.
Bob's got all the money.
One statement, two years ago. My goodness.
Okay, so any questions for staff at this time?
So could you, you, I'm assuming these red lines are yours?
They are.
And could you tell us why you have made these specific changes?
So we, there's four conditions of approval in the last staff report. We removed the fourth, which was the request to amend the trip cap through a different process because they no longer have that as a request. So we removed that condition. The condition of approval number two, we provided greater specificity towards how we document the trip cap. It in no way changes the spirit of the condition. There's still a trip cap, the numbers are still the same, we're still documenting it. We just wanted to be very clear of how we're documenting it.
Denise, we wanted to make clear that we're going to list trip capacity, and we're going to take up the trips by both land use applications or building permits. And it could be where a land use application, a land use application is filed for a particular use, and then some time passes until the building permit gets filed. So we wanted to make it perfectly clear that if it's just a building, a land use application, that takes up the capacity, and that capacity is filled at that point. And then, let's say, nothing happens for a long time, and then a building permit application is filed pursuant to that original land use application, we're going to review that building permit application, or building license, excuse me, business license application, to make sure that those trips were accounted for in our original land use accounting. But if no business license is needed for particular improvements, then we're still going to take that capacity. We just wanted to make sure that we're not double-counting the trips because by requiring two reviews, if only one type of review is required. So there could be a scenario where just a land use application is required, right? So nobody would have to prove up anything as part of the business license. There could be a case where there's just a business license required, just tenant improvements happen. In that case--
It still triggers it.
It still triggers it. Or in cases where they both have to happen, we're going to count, we're going to evaluate this at both times.
So basically, you're just trying to make sure something doesn't fall through the cracks.
So now, we do have an expiration on our land use applications, I presume. I mean, they don't go on forever.
Yes, but I'm--
It's two years plus two years of extension.
So they could get two years plus an extension, but then that's sort of it.
But my concern was that there may be a situation where something else could happen in between.
My concern is conditional zone changes in general.
Yeah, I don't like those.
Can I ask a question, too?
That's it.
Since I have not been in this area, are there, I see that there's three properties across on Maple Lane Court. I didn't even know there was a Maple Lane Court. I've never been down there. Are there homes surrounding those three properties, or is that just three properties set by themselves across the street from this big property?
They're set by themselves. Metro owns that other land around it.
Okay, how do those properties come to get there? And a metro property? Okay, so the impact that there will be some crossover, something going across that street, there's nobody, no residential? Oh, I see. Didn't have it on. There's no residential? I saw that look. No residential in that area that has to cross over the road?
Look at the aerial right now.
Okay, this wasn't up earlier. Okay, thanks. I mean, it was up earlier, it wasn't then. Okay, thanks. Just was a quick question.
Well, let me ask a question. How much MUC, MUC, excuse me, I get these confused. MUC 2 land do we have in the city of Oregon City?
What?
One moment, please.
Laura doesn't know it by heart.
Oh, no, they don't memorize this stuff.
I used to.
And the reason I'm asking is that--
Not very much. It's only on Beaver Creek Road. If you were to take Beaver Creek maybe towards Safeway from this intersection, there are the MUC 2 on your left, so on Beaver Creek on the opposite side of Fred Myers. There's the MUC 2 there, and that's it. Not much at all.
So then, I think I expressed my concern when the stellar person from ODOT came up and answered our questions, and thank you again. This intersection, this intersection is like the full glass of water, and we are just, regardless of whether this is changed or not, we're still pouring-- regardless of whether this has changed or not, we're still pouring water in a glass that's already full, and it's flowing over. And I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to wrap my head, I've been reading this and rereading this, and trying to wrap my head around,
Careful, it's going to explode.
It is going to explode with this application, I assure you. It already has exploded, so a trip cap,
They have prescriptive rights to build on what's zoned there all day.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But it's still, it's still going to add trips to this intersection, which again, we already know is failing and already has major, major problems.
Right.
And I know that you calculated that out for the existing,
But, but we can't say that they can't build there.
I didn't say that.
So, so it's a choice between what's, what's already zoned there and what they're proposing.
So the, the trip count that you've got here right now is based on existing potential development?
Yes.
Under the existing zoning.
Right.
So the applicant, I didn't slide, I'll show you. The applicant did a layout of a potential subdivision under the existing zoning designations. We're ignoring what the uses are there now, just looking at the zoning designation. And they, you, you can see on here, they, they show the natural resource overlay district and things like that when they did this. But what they did is they, they did a layout, and in our staff report, we did the analysis to prove that this is a ra, a reasonable layout, that it complied with our standards for density and block lengths and things like that. So we wanted to know, if we're doing a trip cap, are we doing, does this really make sense? And is there code back, to back it up? And there is. So they did a, what we think is a, a moderate trip cap, right? They could have done something, probably squeezed some more trips in there, but they didn't. They did a layout, we did the analysis, and it appears to comply, to comply with the standards of our code. And then, my little disclaimer is, they're not actually proposing a subdivision, so they're not doing any development at this time. This is just an example to help us figure out, how do we come up with a trip cap?
This, this subdivision, as, as, kind of like a shadow plat, is telling us what could be done with the existing code. So based on that, this is the trip count that we come up with.
That is correct.
Okay.
And are you showing the Clackamas County area you just referred to as R8?
Uh, so that is the zoning designation,
You can have a park there.
Back there, I think. So it's not part of their application?
Okay, just, I looked at that, I think you just said it was Clackamas County.
No, it's in the city, but it's owned by Metro. Metro owns it, yeah.
Excuse me.
So then, this is why my head exploded.
Right.
If no development is being proposed, see, I think this, the plat was just confusing to me. I looked at it and I said, well, I know they don't want to do that, so the purpose of it wasn't really helpful to me in terms of my review. So if no development is being proposed, then what is the big rush to change the plan amendment, the zone change? Why not wait till they have something that they want to put on there and then come back? That's just, that's the devil part of me on this shoulders is saying, wait a minute, the angel over here is saying something else.
You can ask the applicant.
I know. That's why I just said it out loud.
Okay, do we have any more questions for staff?
No. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Laura. So let's hear from the applicant.
Chair Kidwell, if you give me just a second, I'm going to pass the exhibit to Mr. Hurley. This is somebody who's already in the record.
There's no chance we're going to get to read this tonight, are we?
We already passed that.
It might just be, it might just be pictures.
It's the only,
Chair Kidwell and members of the commission, Dan Fowler, Oregon City, my office location. Just want to, for the sake of time, be very brief on my comments. Glad we're back, we're anxious to, to talk about this and hopefully get decisions made. I want to introduce just people that are here that may or may not be asked or called up and, and to testify, depending on the issues that might be raised. My business partner, Mark Foley, Tom Sissel from Tom Sissel Engineering, Mike Arndt from Lancaster Engineering, Tim Blackwood from Hart Grove, Grozer, Lloyd Hill from Hill Architects, and of course, next to me here, Mike Robinson from Perkins Co. So we, I'm going to turn it over to Michael and, and let him proceed to introduce the topic tonight from our perspective.
Good evening, Chair Kidwell, members of the commission. My name is Michael Robinson. I'm a land use attorney with the firm of Perkins Coie, Perkins Co., whatever. It's late, I'll accept either. What I'd like to do with you tonight in our 15 minutes is walk through the issues and the approval criteria that are relevant to your decision on this application. Keeping in mind, it's pretty late, I won't rush, but I'll try and hit the high points. But please ask us questions, either me, or Dan, or Mike Arndt, or anyone that's here to offer specific information about the application. So what I like to do when there have been questions, let me try and give my answers. Commissioner Heskey, I know we've had this discussion before about conditional zone changes. The only thing I'd point out is, the TPR is one of those administrative rules that expressly has provisions for dealing with traffic mitigation, trip cap. And so when you're dealing with TPR for plan and zoning map amendments as we are here, I think it's envisioned by the agency that created it, LCDC, that you'd have conditions where appropriate. And here, and I'll talk about this a little more, but I think Laura's done a great job of explaining trip cap. It's appropriate to mitigate, and you have to do that through a condition, that's what the TPR requires. Commissioner McGriff, I thought you asked a couple of good questions, and I don't know that I can answer them as fully as you might like, but I'll try. So Laura's slide, I thought, on the trip cap was again really good. The result is, you won't have any new, you won't have a net increase, you won't have any more vehicle trips through the intersection. It's already broken, we don't make it worse, and that's our legal obligation under the TPR. You also asked a good question about why the rush, why do it now? The, one of the, whether it's a good thing or a bad thing about Oregon law, here's black letter law. You can't do a development application for these criteria that we're asking to be in place through the map, through the map amendments. State law says, you've got to get the plan map and the zoning map designations you want in place and have them effective, then you can come in and ask your development applications. That's in ORIS 227-178. Believe me, we'd like to combine it all together, but it's not allowed. You have to have your criteria in effect for the development. The criteria we're seeking to put into effect for the development is the MUC plan map designation and the MUC 2 zoning map designation. That's, that's why, you've got to get that done first, then we'll come back for development. If we tried to do it together, we in the city would be at risk. So having said those things, I, I hope they help, help you think about the application. We appreciate the city giving any notice, the city gave notice to vote metro and DLCD as required by the metro functional plan and state law, and that is satisfied. We agree with the staff report, and we agree with the amended conditions of approval. I think the modified condition of approval require, regarding how you measure the trip cap does, it's, it's more thorough, and we agree with that. And as Laura said, we think that if we chose to amend the trip cap, we're not proposing that, but if we chose to amend it in the future because we're able to, it needs to come back to this body and the city commission. If you approve this, you're adopting it through the type four process, I think that an amendment is required to go through the type four process. If for no other reason than it gives your citizens another opportunity to come here and talk to you about it, and that's what we want to do. So we, Laura gave you or described the additional documents that came into the record. I apologize about the findings, I submitted those on the 24th of December. I wasn't aware until today they weren't in the record, and Laura, thank you for putting them in. Denise held them up and said, are we going to be required to read them tonight? No, please don't, but what I, what I did want to tell you is, we went through all of the issues raised in your November hearing and the findings from the applicant addressed each of the issues raised in that November hearing by folks who came and testified to you, and we thought we had the obligation to do that. So before I talk about the approval criteria, what I want to do is show you this exhibit that I handed out. This is in the Hart-Crowser study. Tim Blackwood, who is here tonight, is a registered professional engineer, he did the Hart-Crowser study. Hart-Crowser study is the geotechnical analysis for the site that explains why there is not a risk of a landslide on our site, but what, what this document shows, the important thing is, I'm looking at the far left of the exhibit, our development is up here, and it's got the notation, hilltop development to be on top of the left, above landslide. The landslide is below our application. What Tim tells you is, that the testimony you've heard about sliding on the apartments, that's because the apartments were on the landslide. We're above the headscarf of the landslide. So if you have more particular questions about that, let's get Tim up and talk about them. But the point of this exhibit is to show you, we're not in the same physical or geological situation as are the apartments that folks have talked, have talked about.
Could I interrupt you for just a quick second?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anybody in the audience that wants this? I have another copy. If you want to come up and get it, you can have this.
Do I think, we have any extra copies? Tell me.
We have, we have a smaller version, but I'm happy to give this up.
Ms. McGriff, that, as I said, that's also in the Hart,
I can take it from there.
Okay.
It's also in the Hart-Crowser study.
Yeah, we have, we have that.
All right.
That's why I said, if somebody wanted, the audience wanted it, they could have it, because we've got it, but thank you.
Chair Kidwell, let me go through the approval criteria. What I'm going to do is start with the goals, the statewide planning goals, go through the plan policies, and then sometime in the next two hours, finish up.
That's fine.
So let me talk about the statewide planning goals. Goal one is satisfied. In addition to the notices given to property owners by the city, required by ORIS 197-763, applicant hosted a neighborhood meeting before submitting, plus the applicant hosted a meeting in December of anyone who was interested after the November hearing coming and talking to them. So city is fully complied with goal one. I understand there are some quibbles about whether it's been complied with, but from a legal matter, in my opinion, it's fully complied with. The city followed their acknowledged citizen participation plan, that's what goal one requires.
Did anybody come?
And we turned in our,
Yeah, we, people did attend, Commissioner McGriff, and we submitted,
Three meetings, three different meetings.
Goal five is satisfied, and what you need to know about goal five is, there's only a very limited goal five-based resource zone, that's down, did you say along Beaver Creek Road, Laura? That's the natural resources overlay. That's the only goal five resource on the site. This application does not propose to amend goal five, and the case law is pretty clear. If you're not proposing to amend goal five, you don't need to look at the administrative rule that implements goal five, you don't need to make any additional goal five findings. The only resource is implemented by the natural resources, resources overlay zone in the city's acknowledged land use regulations, that's Chapter 1749. We're not proposing to change it, so you can find goal five is satisfied. Goal six supports a finding, or the evidence in the record supports a finding that applicable state and federal standards can be satisfied through the requirements that will be applied to site development. And what's important about goal six is it refers to waste and other discharges from the future development itself. So it necessarily looks forward to see, can the uses that could go on the site satisfy applicable state and federal standards? The primary issue is, is water impact on Newell Creek. The reality is, your code requires extensive erosion and sedimentation control, plus we're going to retain water on site. Those are typical methods for dealing with maintaining water quality. Those are typical ways that the state sees that water quality is approved. Now, there's a case citation in some of the information that's submitted to you, it's an old case called Marcot Holdings v. City of Tigard, that suggests that we have to do more with goal six now, and I tell you, that case doesn't apply here for two reasons. One, there's a more recent case decided by the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals, Heskey City of Corvallis. That was one of my cases from last year, and that stands for the proposition, and we have that in our findings, and I'll just read the quick citation to you. Goal six is satisfied where there is a reasonable expectation that the uses will be able to comply with applicable state and federal environmental regulations. That's on page three of my findings. The evidence that we submitted in the findings goes on to explain why the uses that will be allowed through this map amendment can reasonably be expected to satisfy state and federal standards. The other thing that's important to remind, to know about Marcot Holdings, Marcot Holdings did exactly what we're not doing. It included, in addition to the map amendments, a site development review application. So there, the petitioners raised issues regarding how that development application was satisfied. You don't have that case here. In fact, when I go back and read Marcot, I'm reminded it's a screwy case. I'm not, I don't understand why you, why they were able to submit development review for the reason I explained earlier, but the better case is Heskey-Corvallis, and what this tells you is that we satisfy goal six. Goal seven is the risk issue, and that's why this Hart-Crowser study is substantial evidence by a professional engineer, telling you that there's very little risk that this site is going to slide. Hart-Crowser study proposes some mitigation. My findings go through the Hart-Crowser study and pull out the parts that are, we think, helpful to the planning commission and the public in understanding that. Goal 12 is transportation, that's implemented through the transportation planning rule. The important thing to remember is that goal 12, or the transportation planning rule expressly allows what we're proposing to do to mitigate traffic, and that's OAR 66001200602D. So where you have a situation where you have significant effect, and that's just a term of art used in the transportation planning rule, you either have to change your application or you have to mitigate through, among other things, a condition of approval. That's what the trip cap is. It's the condition of approval that's applied with this map amendment, it stays on the land, we're limited to those peak hour trips. If we want to do more, we have to come back to this commission and the city commission to change that. So the trip cap is a way of assuring that we don't make a broken intersection worse. That's allowed by the TPR, and that's what we're doing. Let me talk a little bit about the Oregon City Conference of Plan Policies. Mr. Nacita submitted a very lengthy document today, I believe, or maybe it was yesterday. I've gone through it, I can talk about it in detail, but let me try and summarize some of the issues Mr. Nacita raises about the plan policies. When you look at a plan policy, you have to decide, is it mandatory or is it aspirational? If it's mandatory, it applies and applicant has to address it. It's aspirational, it doesn't. Many of the plan policies, and by the way, with all due respect to Mr. Nacita, he doesn't offer as much analysis on any of those plan policies, he simply lists them. Many of the plan policies are not mandatory, they're aspirational, they use language like "should" or "encourage." That's, again, black letter law from the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals, so put those aspirational plan policies aside, they don't apply. Some of them don't apply to this situation. There's one plan policy that cited, that plainly applies by its language to city facilities. Well, this isn't a city facility, so you have to decide, does it apply to the subject matter? You finally get down to the last set of plan policies that are mandatory. I went through these, the plan policies that we believe are mandatory, we've addressed in the approval criteria, or the evidence can be found to address them in findings. If you want to ask us specific questions, we'd appreciate the chance to, to answer them. Again, given the lateness of the hour, I, I don't want to spend a lot of time going through those. The bottom line is, I think the staff report has adequately addressed most of the relevant plan policies. We can certainly do more, and if they come up during public testimony, we'll come up in rebuttal and talk about them, but I think you can make findings that the relevant mandatory plan policies are satisfied. So there will be other issues, obviously, we will appreciate an opportunity to respond to them, but the bottom line is, the revised staff report with the additional findings plus the findings the applicants offered, the planning commission demonstrate by substantial evidence that we've met the approval criteria. And Chair Kidwell, if you all have questions for us, please ask us tonight, that's why we're all here. Otherwise, we hope you close the public hearing and deliberate and make a recommendation to your city commission that it approves this application, and we appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant this time?
You mentioned early that, you said you submitted them, but they, but Laura said they were not included?
We submitted, I sent them to Laura on the 24th of December. The cover letter says, please place them before this planning commission prior to the January 11th hearing. For whatever reason, they weren't submitted to you until today, and I, I appreciate people get busy.
That is true.
Okay. But they're not in this, though.
No, they are not.
They're the supplement next to it. And then, but a lot of the findings were pasted into the staff report, so there, the, the language, it cites the applicant on a lot of things, so.
As Ms. McGriff knows from her tenure as a planner and as a member of this commission, if we want something to be in front of you, we've got to get it in, so I wanted to make sure it was physically before you before the record closes.
So the, the, those items are in the staff report?
Yes.
But his copy, his submittal is not?
It is now.
It is physically, my findings, I apologize for, my,
No, that's okay.
My findings, I'm sorry, my findings are physically before you, so they're part of the record. What Laura said is, she and Carrie Richter had the findings, they used them in the preparation of their updated staff report, because they were looking for the applicant to provide findings and evidence, and that's why we prepared those. But I wanted to make sure that my standalone findings document was part of the record.
And that's what I want to read.
Yes. Good. Well, if you want to get a good night's sleep, just,
I'm a night person.
Uh-oh.
This is, this is, I'm usually up anyway, it doesn't matter. I'm, I'm alert and I'm paying attention.
Yes, my bad.
Yeah.
Chair Kidwell, any other questions we can answer for you?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We will proceed with public testimony at this time. And as I indicated previously, we'll appreciate your cooperation with the three-minute rule and your testimony. First person to testify is Mike Mitchell.
Evening. I'm Mike Mitchell. I live on Walnut Grove Way, actually about two blocks from this site. And I have to start by saying that I can't believe we're even talking about development on this site and more traffic for reasons that we discussed in mind-numbing detail earlier this evening. That's a failed intersection. And as Commissioner McGriff said, you know, now we're kicking toucans down that same broken road, and I can't believe we're going to consider it. That being said, and Commissioner Espy made this comment a few minutes ago, that there probably isn't a way to prevent development on that site. And if you believe that that's true, then I'm going to say that I'm in favor of this proposal for no other reason than it's something different. Immediately to the east of this site, there's three subdivisions, Walnut Grove, Crabtree Terrace, and Merryweather. And there's about 600 homes there. They're essentially all the same size lots. They're essentially all the same size houses. It is boring. All we're doing is building bedrooms. People get up in the morning, they drive to Portland to work, they drive home at night, have their dinner, and go to bed. It's a ghost town during the day. There's no activity, and we keep doing that over and over and over again. And if, if Dan and his group go ahead with the way it's zoned now, here's another hundred and whatever it is houses. We keep making the same mistake. And someday, we're going to wake up and realize that we don't have a community. We have a bunch of bedrooms for people who live in, for people who work in Portland. So, you know, for that reason, at least they're proposing something different. I was going to talk about the traffic on Maple Lane Road from Beaver Creek, the Beaver Creek intersection, the Thayer Road intersection, and the Walnut Grove intersection, but I know they're not putting anything specific forward tonight, so I'll leave that for another day. My big concern has to do with the trip cap and the usages that they said they're going to restrict. And can we possibly make that in stone enough? I'm a bit encouraged by the fact that they said they want, they want to make it a type four review. I don't have any reason to doubt what they're saying, what their plans are, but I know times change and people's, people change. And are they always going to have control of this site? Is this always going to pencil out, or is there going to come a day, we have another housing recession, and all of a sudden 7/11 comes along, and this site makes more sense for them financially, so they come back again? And so we start nibbling away at the well-intentioned limits that were put on this, because it's very easy to move from point A to point B. You know, this is pretty serious. We're going from A to Z, but it's going to be very easy to make small revisions. And how are we going to protect the neighbors to take what seems to be a good proposal today and turn it into something that's not? So I guess what I'm saying, I think development here is a bad idea, but this may be the best bad idea.
Thank you.
Take that "thank you."
Okay. The next person to speak is Christine Kozinski.
I'm tired.
You're not the only one.
I'm tired.
No, I'm not tired.
I'm too old for this. I'm a grandmother. I don't long here.
You're never too old to be a citizen.
I have to be up early in the morning. Laura, before you start my time, can someone give me a current trip count from Maple Lane Court out onto Maple Lane? What's coming out of there now in buses and employee cars and homes?
I don't have that.
That information is not currently in this record right now. We can, if the planning commission chooses to bring up our transportation engineer, he can talk to you a little bit more.
It would be a good figure to have, because when I read the traffic report, you're talking about possibly 6,966 trips coming.
State your name for the question.
Chair Kidwell, can we, please? They should be addressing the commission, not my staff. If they have a question of the commission, she can certainly ask that.
Christine Kozinski, Incorporated, Cockamus County. The gentleman that came up with this map, I wonder if he knows that Lloyds of London, the only underwriter of landslide insurance, will not write landslide on anyone that lives within one mile of a landslide. That means no one on this hilltop is going to get landslide insurance. The other thing is that the bus administration building on this property is 57 feet away from the head of the landslide. City regulations are that development must be 200 feet away from the toe of the landslide. That means development must be pushed back. I take exception to the preliminary geologic hazards report. It talks about the fact that increased groundwater levels could occur from stormwater and other sources of water infiltration that are altered by development. To mitigate for this hazard, potential sources of water infiltration will be controlled largely by relying on stormwater detention. I attended the Kanema Neighborhood Association meeting last year, where Scott Burns, professor of geology at PSU, was invited to speak about landslides. A question came up, Dr. Burns, I have seen the city building several detention ponds very near to landslides. Doesn't this release a lot of water into landslides? Dr. Burns stated, do not build detention ponds on landslides. The water from the ponds must be drained away from the slides. This may cost more, but keep ponds away from areas of the slides. He went on to state that planning commission should, should pay special attention to this concern and be sure the ponds are placed away from these hazardous areas. One of the city planners and engineer were present at this meeting. I question why the city would consider stormwater detention for mitigation and not mention a solution for draining water away from the large amount of landslides here, where gravity flow will take huge amounts of water into this very long chain of deep-seated landslides. Wasn't it back in 1993 that Professor Burns came before the city stating it would be dangerous to build apartments in Newell Creek Canyon? The city didn't listen to Dr. Burns, and look what's just happened. Will you be so bold as to not listen to his recommendations again? I cannot support this proposal for a zone change for all of the above reasons and for the failure to meet all the goals that I've listed. But most importantly, due to the fact that no new property owners here will be able to obtain landslide insurance for losses, and secondly, that the city is not supporting requirements of state law ORS 105.465, where new property owners will not be advised they live in a landslide zone, and by the way, if there's a landslide, I'm sorry, you're not covered. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person to speak is John Mackler.
John Mackler, Oregon Department of Transportation. Commissioner McGriff, thank you very much for that lovely compliment earlier on.
You are certainly, you're certainly deserving.
Someone back at 123 Northwest Planners hears about it.
Just give me the name and I'll call them.
Oh, there you go.
I do know Matt Garrett, by the way, so that helps.
This is paying off. So, I'm here to deliver a very similar message. I have great sympathy for the concerns expressed by earlier testimony about the trip cap and some of the questions you've asked. I have struggled to understand these issues myself in other cases, and it feels like more and more jurisdictions around this region are relying on the trip cap to accomplish this kind of development. So, sometimes it's nice to feel normal. It may or may not make you feel better to know that you're not alone in this approach to permitting development. It is, just to state the case for my conscience, Laura, I'd, I'd like to recommend for the slides, when you talk about it, to have the words, no new traffic, I think is something that can be confusing. So to the commissioners, we assume for our purposes that the, the traffic projected from the existing land use as zoned is, is hitting the intersection in the future. That's, that is our base case. We assume it's there. So when you adopt a trip cap, you're saying, whatever the new activity is, it will not exceed the amount of traffic we are already expecting of this location. So when we say, when you see in the presentation that there isn't new traffic, it should really say there isn't new traffic relative to our existing assumptions. So, if it were any other, I would be out here with more outrage than the rest of them combined, because as you can imagine, I don't want to see unanticipated trips hitting this intersection, that we have plenty of concerns about it. But what the trip cap proposal is doing is limiting the traffic from the new zone to the traffic that would be allowed in the existing zone. It, I think, I can't remember, Commissioner McGriff, your phrase breaks your brain. My brain has broken over this case in a lot of settings, and I feel like I have come to some point of acceptance that this is a thing we do. I would encourage you to consider, as you move forward, there are some jurisdictions that explore enforcement mechanisms for trip caps, and that's something that I think you could talk about, not likely at this time of zoning, but perhaps at the time that you permit development, that you can, there are different mechanisms that different jurisdictions use to address that concern of how things might change over time, that there are tools available to you that your staff, I believe, could help you explore. But from the, again, from the perspective of the Oregon Department of Transportation, we are, we do not object to this proposed rezone. The methodology that staff have followed, the staff findings are valid. We understand that the, the trip cap is very confusing to lots of folks. And again, I think you have more bright minds here behind me to help explain it if you want more explanation, but.
I got a question.
Yeah.
So what if, what if we didn't have this zone change before us at all, and they went forward with a subdivision, and I decided I wanted to appeal that subdivision, because, boy, this intersection really sucks, and we really need to reduce the amount of traffic here? How successful would I be with a Luba appeal, saying, gee whiz, you know, this intersection's really bad, they have their prescriptive rights to build it, you know, whatever underlying zones they have? Would Luba ever come back and say, you know, this intersection's really bad, you really need to reduce the amount or change the zone back to R10 or R-whatever to reduce the number of trips? Probably wouldn't be very likely, right?
Tony, can you toss me your crystal ball, please?
Right. I know.
This is in the shop.
Yeah.
But, well, isn't that a legal question, Karen?
It is a legal question.
And I know it requires a lot of speculation, and I, and I apologize for that, but.
The thing of it is, is development that's allowed outright is not subject to the transportation planning rule or the statewide planning goals.
That's what I want to hear.
That's the, that's the sort of.
Right.
Crux number one, and crux number two is that in Oregon City Municipal Code, Section 1208, we have exempt, in the mobility standards, we have exempted permitted development from complying with the .99 B over C requirement.
Very good.
So, if you do, if you're, anybody else doing a zone change or plan amendment or master plan that would exceed the permitted trips would not be allowed, because it would violate the mobility standards.
Thank you.
It would be the same.
Right.
So that's the other sort of, so we've got the state law component, and then we've got the local code component, both of which authorize permitted development to go forward. And this is a subdivision that would be permitted, so it would just be authorized.
That was the burning question I had when I was going through all this stuff.
I got a question. Take a look at this, this area map up here, and the comments that were made regarding landslides. In your professional judgment, if that were to go towards the, towards the highway, what impact do you think that would have on public transportation there?
I do not care to comment on landslides. Yeah.
But that highway is built in a landslide area, right?
I can tell you how I feel about landslides, because we've had a really fun month lately, but I, I have no comment about this map and landslides and my highway.
Right. But isn't 213 built within a landslide area?
I am not prepared to comment.
I will answer and say, yes. If you drive it, you can see it.
What's the traffic count there? Do you know, it's over 100, isn't it?
I could make up a number, but I'd rather send you an email tomorrow.
Fair enough.
Did you say you're part of ODOT?
Yes.
Yes, I'm the planning manager for ODOT Region 1. You think I should just know these numbers?
Somebody know that Highway 213 is considered by most people in that landslide area.
That's just not.
He probably wasn't working in when they built it, but they put it on the lease.
You know, I am so disappointed. I just thought you had an answer to everything.
He has, I told you, he has minions who do that. All right, let's move on.
Okay, thank you.
He's the manager.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay. The next person to speak is Bob Nelson.
Hi, I'm Bob Nelson, and I live on Holly Lane. I'm concerned about the landslides, especially the three properties are above Maple Court Lane, or Maple Court Road, Maple Lane Court. That's it. They, their back property lines are extremely close to the landslide. The last drawings I saw, townhouses were put there. The problems that are happening is if that landslide is reactivated, 213 will be damaged. It's not going to, they're, even the paperwork, they just showed, shows this highly sitting on landslide soils, the, the pink. I'd like, in rebuttal, I'd love to know where that transect goes through there, because we don't, we can't tell that from this drawing. Presently, down 213, the Department of Transportation is working on, on a number of items there. You know, engineers are great. They make mistakes. The mistake here, if it occurs, it's a very costly mistake. I would much rather see the city not approve this until, maybe, maybe those three plots should be donated to Metro and get that, get the project back away from the, the landslide. Maybe we should not be digging down the middle of Maple Lane Court, putting a sewer line in, digging, I don't know how deep they're going to have to dig for that, because that disrupts the water flow. Is it going to change it to the better or worse? I don't know. There's a lot of questions that we really need to ask here. The upper housing complex that was, where we had people removed from or evacuated from was above the, the mapped landslides, but landslides can creep uphill, and they do frequently. They don't have to slide in the same plane. They can creep uphill as, and create a new plane as they go. Okay, I, I need to say that I submitted the letter that I gave here to, to Dan Halliday, and I wanted you to know that I did make an error. There is landslide ordinances. It's very limited. Those landslide ordinances are limited to the person that's applying to hire a geological engineer if they're within 200 feet, and then the city may or may not hire a, or have the, another engineer review it. Typically, when you have engineering people, my brother is an attorney that knows who, what type of engineers to hire. or evacuated from, was above the mapped landslides. But landslides can creep uphill, and they do frequently. They don't have to slide in the same plane. They can creep uphill and create a new plane as they go. Okay, I need to say that I submitted the letter that I gave here to Dan Halliday, and I wanted you to know that I did make an error. There is landslide ordinances. It's very limited. Those landslide ordinances are limited to the person that's applying to hire a geological engineer if they're within 200 feet, and then the city may or may not hire a, or have another engineer review it. Typically, when you have engineering people, my brother is an attorney that knows what type of engineers to hire. You hire to get the answer you want. And I'm a little concerned about that. There's very little information on landslides in the city code. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
The next card I have is from Michael Arndt. Are you?
I'm sure who was that, Mike Arndt?
Mike?
Yeah, he's a traffic engineer.
Okay, so I'll sit you aside. Mark Foley?
That was a pass.
I didn't, we didn't see anything. Your pass, okay.
Your pass, okay. Elizabeth Grazer Lindsey?
Could you put it on the other slide that shows the plat? My name is Elizabeth Grazer Lindsey, and I'm from Beaver Creek. The zone change is based on a trip cap that ignores the transportation system plan. The city's current transportation system plan provides that 50% of trips in 2035 will be by alternative transportation, that is, by buses, bikes, and pedestrians. Therefore, the trip cap needs to be at 50% of the level that it's currently at, which I think is 722 trips a day instead of the 1,444. So it'd be good to get that error corrected in your documents. The trip cap is erroneous in several other ways as well. The plat, the hypothetical plat, assumes that all building applications would be accepted without considering the road capacity. It also assumes that they would be all approved without considering the landslide that we've been hearing about. We'll look at this. Someone was talking about, they didn't know where this transect was drawn that showed that the development would be on top of the bluff. But if you look at the map that I have submitted to the record that shows where the natural resource area is and the creek, which is quite near to Beaver Creek Road, you can see that there's a lot of housing that's being planned, right, with the creek right going through the yard and near the house. So you can see that there's a lot of housing being planned in a clear landslide area, which means that this plat is showing you way more homes than would be actually approved. The geological report from the applicant shows that this property needs to be totally covered with impervious surface. That means that it needs to be completely paved or completely covered with concrete over this entire area. And you can see those little dark areas up there. That's where you're supposed to be collecting the water retention. But we just heard that you shouldn't be collecting water in landslide area. So this plat is totally erroneous for deciding how many of these houses are possible in a landslide area, which makes the trip count too high. This also shows some houses that are in the stream corridor. If you look at the creek map, you can see there's about four houses there that use the long driveways that violate the flag lot law that, is it 16850? It doesn't show how you're going to have enough parking for these houses. And there isn't also enough sewage to service all of these houses, because we know that we have, the sewage plant doesn't have enough capacity, and I submitted the documentation for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The last person I have to speak is Jim Noceta.
Second to the left.
Well, my time begins. Can I ask, Laura, did you all get my supplemental from yesterday?
Yes.
And all the exhibits?
Yes.
Okay. Could you put Exhibit B up on the screen?
I don't have them electronically.
I sent you everything electronically.
If you give me a minute, I could pull down the screen. Would you like to do that? Sure.
If it's convenient.
Do you want to let Mr. Edgar testify while you're doing that?
That's a good idea.
Getting ready?
No, have it, but which one?
Laura, you have a 24-hour. You have an exhibit on a thumbprint.
I have it electronically on our network that I can access.
Okay, Paul?
Thank you, Paul Edgar, Oregon City. Within this area, I still am very concerned in having a good transportation master plan that has adequate set-asides for the needed capacity requirements right-of-way. I don't want to be, I don't want to be, I don't think you guys want to be in a position where we don't have a real plan in force with enough knowledge so that we have all of the right-of-way necessary right in this area. As an example, I was on the Clarkland County Transportation Committee, and I'm looking at the capital improvement plan, and that's been approved. It's part of the regional plan. And it shows that we have a bike route, a bike-ped route, all the way right through this area, all the way to Beaver Creek CPO. And so we have not really, at this time, set aside any of the right-of-way for that, and that is part of a regional plan. Also, we have the problem in the regional plan that this is, this intersection right through here is a dedicated strategic freight route. And the strategic freight route means that right-of-way and access through this is over, is something greater than what Oregon City can restrict, and we need to have an understanding right up front about what is the needs of our comrades through this whole area. So Beaver Creek Road is a dedicated strategic freight route, and 213 is one, too. And so this sits right in the middle of it all, and so we need to have this transportation plan and know that we have all of the right-of-way, and that should be done before we zone something out. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Is it my imagination?
No, the lights came up, and now we're blind. Now we're blind.
It's already morning. The sun came up.
There you go.
It's going to mess up your...
We're cycling through again.
It's going to mess up your body clock here.
James Noceta, I live in Oregon City. Prelimarily, I just want to make sure that we're collectively clear that there's no 120-day clock running on this land use application because it involves a comp plan amendment. Having said that, if you decide tonight to set this over, I'm requesting that the record be held open. So getting to this exhibit, the reason I bring this up is because of the trip cap. I don't see how the map that it is used to establish the trip cap can apply when you have such a substantial goal five resource area at the bottom of this big parcel. It seems to take for granted that you, the planning commission, or city staff, would allow substantial impacts on the goal five resource area. In fact, if you go back to the shadow plat, I think part of, I think part of that cul-de-sac is encroaching into this bulb of the goal five resource area on the right. And this all goes to, I continue what Ms. Grazer Lindsey was getting to, the shadow plat is just, it's farcical. It's a complete arbitrary statement of something that we would never know would lead to that number of lots. There's so many things that would go into play that I don't think you could calculate the trip cap based on a shadow plat unless you ran the shadow plat full, a full subdivision review based on the current zoning. It doesn't have to be official, but I don't think you can do it where you make estimates and say, this appears to comply. I think you would have to run everything through as it were a real subdivision application based on the current zoning. Not only the goal five resource area, there's a statute, ORS 197646, which says in certain instances, goals do apply directly to a development permit application. So, I mean, I just don't think that you can rely on a shadow plat like has been submitted for a trip cap analysis. Another comment I would have is, I think this application is incomplete. One of the reasons I did go so far is to list a lot of those comp plan policies and goals that just have not been addressed at all. It's just not there. It shouldn't even have been deemed complete. It should have been rejected, and I think on that basis, this should be denied. I acknowledge Mr. Robinson's comment. Some of the comp plan policies I listed are, in fact, hortatory. They are, but there are some that are mandatory, and some of the mandatory ones have not been addressed at all. The wildfire comp plan policy that I cite with the exhibits that show that four of the lots, the county is saying, is in a moderate level of wildfire hazard. There's just been no, nothing to address that comp plan policy. So I think you should either set this over so that the applicant, and not our staff, that's another point. I'm seeing a pattern in planning in Oregon City where applicants really submit really, really inadequate applications, and then we have our staff, at our taxpayer expense, trying to make the applicant's case for them. And that's the case in this application. I really, I really have an issue with that. And I think this commission needs to start enacting a policy that if there are relevant approval criteria that aren't addressed by an applicant, it's not on our staff at our expense to make the case for them. The application should be denied and come back with a fully complete application with all the comp plan or goals addressed by the applicant. And I think this is a good application to start that precedent. Thank you.
Jim, did I hear you suggest or did you request a holdover?
I said, if you do decide as a commission to set this hearing over, I'm requesting that the record be kept open.
Thank you.
That is all I have in terms of people wanting to testify. So we will close the public hearing portion.
Do they get rebuttal?
We have rebuttal.
They have rebuttal.
That's right. Good point.
He's not closing it.
Yep, he's, the lady's tired.
Anyway.
There's a pumpkin waiting outside for us. Come on up. Rebuttal time.
What we're going to do, I'm going to let Dan go first, and then Mr. Sissel, Mr. Blackwood, Mr. Arndt, and then I'll finish. We'll be as efficient as we can in our speaking.
Please do.
Dan Fowler.
Kidwell, could I ask a question? Did Mr. Noceta ask?
If you speak, can you?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Laura.
Just want to try and understand what Mr. Noceta just said. It's unclear to me. Did he ask for the record to remain open or not? Because it's not the commission's duty to decide to continue the hearing. You can, of course, but I think we need to be clear about what he asked. If he didn't, then fine. If he did, we need to, we need to know that so we can set the open record period.
That's why I asked.
I think he just wanted to have the record held open.
I heard him say he wanted the record held open.
He said, if we...
Continue it. He wants the record held open.
He wants the record held open.
So I don't think he made a request for a continuance.
He did not request a continuance.
Okay, and so we're not asking that the record be held up? I'm sorry, are you distinguishing between a continuance and an open?
I said he did not request a continuance, but he said if we hold this over, he wants the record held open.
Are you requesting a continuance?
No.
No, no, I'm looking at him.
Thank you.
Jim back there.
No, I thought I made myself clear.
I think I just said it very clearly. That's what he said. He did not request a continuance.
So, Mr. Kidwell, before we conclude tonight, we're not asking for continuance for an open record period either. If the commission decides it wants that, we have, I'd like to talk with you about the time periods.
Okay.
Thank you.
I can be very brief. Dan Fowler, just wanted to address two issues, because it keeps being brought up. For the record, I have checked with an insurance company. I can get flood, or slide insurance on a property on Maple Lane Court. There are several companies that issue it. There's not one in the world, and it can be purchased, just for the record. I'll let, I may come up and address something else, but I'll let, who's going to go next? Tom? He can address a couple of issues.
For the record, my name's Tom Sissel. I'm a civil engineer. And specifically, Laura, if you could bring up Mr. Noceta's attachment.
You don't want to.
Poor Laura. She's getting a workout.
If you're not able to, I'll just go proceed. Okay, this map, which comes from your city's GIS mapping system, represents areas that are thought to be water resources and an area beyond it, I believe 200 feet beyond what the edge of that resource is. An intent of that is to cover potential areas that might be water resources that are not mapped. In this case, the applicant has had an environmental scientist go out and look at this and check the, what jurisdictional waters maybe exist on the site. It's a very narrow drainage way, and it's going to have the minimum buffers that are permitted by the city. In addition to that, the city code, and I don't have that section with me specifically, and if the record is held open, I will add that to it, but the city code does allow lots to extend into the natural resource area, but you cannot build developed area within the lots. In other words, you could build a home, but it has to be outside the resource, but the part of the rear yard could extend into that resource area. In addition, there was a comment made that the flag lots aren't allowed, but actually, all those lots had frontage on Beaver Creek or Maple Lane Road, so they aren't technically flag lots. They have a rare access, so to speak, but they have frontage. All the lots were, in that configuration, were laid out to ensure that they had met the minimum frontages, the minimum square footages for the zoning. And when Laura spoke earlier during her staff comment period when she was presenting it, she talked about that we weren't taking this to the maximum density. And one of those things on that subdivision configuration is we showed this cul-de-sac here right across from Fair Road. Now, technically, we could have had a ride-in that could potentially be a ride-in, ride-out only, and thus, there wouldn't have been so much room eaten up by this cul-de-sac. So that is an area where there was actually a little density loss because we put a cul-de-sac there. And then finally, these dark areas there to show water quality, water detention areas. Now, there's issues raised that, because this is potentially near a landslide area, we shouldn't be infiltrating waters. But water detention does not require infiltration. That'd be water retention. These could be line facilities, and in the future development, whatever may occur on these properties, if the zone change... these properties, if the zone change were approved, or if, even if it weren't, the, the water quality and detention facilities either could be in lined surface facilities, or they could be an underground detention pipe. The infiltration does not necessarily have to be a part of the water quality and detention And then finally, since it was all discussed, the, the road configuration and the access requirements were set up to meet the block and lot length requirements, and that includes pedestrian pathway. So, this was laid out with the intent to meet all city's requirements for a subdivision Certainly, we looked to try to maximize the number of lots because that was what we were trying to do for, in terms of what would be the maximum trip count. And so, that's, that's how we all came about it. But there's nothing done here that would not be allowed by city code.
So, Tom?
Yes.
Where is the subdivision map that shows how what your consultant did affects the water resources overlay? Because it seems to me that might be not as many lots.
Okay, I'm trying to follow that question, the subdivision.
Well, you're saying that you could have some of the water resource stuff in the rear yards, but the, the little diagram that you submitted showing the plat, and I'm doing parentheses, doesn't show how the analysis that you just said was done that shows that this is narrower, where does that fall on that plat?
Okay. We don't see any resource designations on the plat where it would have been avoided.
Yeah, so if it's really there, you might not be able to get all those lots that you were saying. That, I mean, I think it's a very, it's a valid point. I just, I don't see it. That's what I'm just asking. Where is it? Because it didn't go, we didn't make the water resources area go away.
We show the 50-foot buffer line. Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm telling you. It's like, I can't, you know.
There is a 50-foot buffer line.
You might be there.
Yes. It's, uh, right there, and right there it knows 50-foot buffer. There's the line.
Well, that's kinda blurry, but that's, that's all right. So, that's identified somewhere that that's the water resources overlay area, or?
That would be the 50-foot buffer from the resource.
Okay, so there's, there's that stream that's going through there.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that, well, I apologize. That's just really hard to see. I'm sorry.
Thanks for pointing that out.
Yeah, well, and that's, I mean, this is the original paper copy and...
Yeah, we got the reduced squishy version.
Yes.
Yeah, the squished-up version.
Yeah.
Okay, so you've actually used your time for rebuttal. Is there anything else you need to do to conclude?
I think we had a couple more speakers I want to speak.
I think, I think you've, you've used your time. If you, if you can quickly conclude, that would be great.
We're already here. I'm okay. So, I don't know about my fellow people.
She has nothing to do till seven this morning.
Yeah, that's right.
Mr. Kidwell, I feel that...
I live for the night.
I feel like Mr. Blackwood would have a few minutes, and then give me a few minutes, and we'll make it up. And then I, I do have a request for applicant's final written argument.
Okay.
We'll get through Mr. Blackwood and I first.
Good evening. My name's Tim Blackwood, geotechnical engineer, engineering geologist with Art Krauser, and I was the one who authored that study you seen there about the landslide, so...
Your, your name again?
Tim Blackwood. I guess just briefly, what we did is we went out and did a pretty comprehensive review of the site. Pretty typical things we do when addressing landslides. We drilled a boring, we did some laboratory testing, we did some numerical modeling, so a pretty thorough study. It was a preliminary study, but pretty thorough, and in that, we basically identified kind of the location of the landslide and what the risk was of movement of that landslide. What we found, really, we looked at kind of two mechanisms. One was, what's potential for that large landslide to move, which would include the highway all the way down to the creek? Then we looked at, what about shallow landsliding, just kind of on the steep slope by the, you know, the development? And what we found is that the potential for the large landslide to move is very low, and the potential for the shallower slides close to the area to move is kind of low to moderate, and we basically gave specific mitigation recommendations so that doesn't happen. Those are not to infiltrate water on the site, not to place large fills within a certain distance of that slope, and the other was to put a slope setback in for development. So basically, what I'm saying is that we do recognize the presence of a landslide adjacent to the site. Our development actually won't be on the landslide, it'll be adjacent to it. And we made specific recommendations so that that risk is mitigated. A couple of things, I guess, to say as well is that, you know, the couple, I think misunderstandings, one Tom said, detention, we recommended detention and not infiltration. So, detention is just holding water. We don't want to infiltrate it, but we do want to, want to detain it and then take it off the site. And the other thing that was said here was that, that we wanted to cover the whole site with impervious surface. That really isn't accurate. Water that is collected needs to be detained and routed properly off the site, but we don't need to cover the whole site with impervious material. So, I think that covers the main things that were mentioned.
Mr. Kidwell, Mike Robinson, you can go on behalf of the applicant. I'll go through mine very quickly, and then I do want to ask the, it sounds like the evidentiary record and public hearing are being closed, so I'll talk to you about applicant's final written argument. So, let me hit just one or two points with each person. I'll make it fast. I think Mr. Mitchell asked a good question, and that is, how are you certain that the trip cap and use restrictions remain in place? This really is written as much in stone as any regulation can be written in stone. It runs with the land until it's approved, removed, or modified. And in order to remove or modify the trip cap, the applicant has to come back to this commission, and then you make a recommendation to the city commission. So, I think that's probably as about as difficult to remove as any regulation that you can conceive of. The only thing I want to respond to Ms. Kozinski's testimony on is that the testimony by Dr. Burns, it may well be that detention ponds shouldn't be on landslide areas. Tim just explained what we're proposing, and remember, this is not a landslide area. We're above the landslide area. In terms of ODOT's testimony, I think what Carrie Richter, your city attorney, said is right, as opposed to a permitted use subdivision, you actually get more review and control with this kind of application because we're, we're required to address the trip through the transportation plane rule, and that's how you end up with the limitation on new Want to just mention one thing that Ms. Grasser-Lindsey talked about, and that is that we have to consider the TSP. That's simply not the case. Now, when we do a development, we have to consider improvements required by the TSP, but we don't have to consider the TSP and the trip cap. If you go back to what Mr. Mackler said, he, I think, did a good job of explaining how you get the trip cap, and you're comparing existing trips to proposed trips, you end up with no new trips. That's the whole point of doing that. And just a couple of points about Mr. Nocita's testimony. First of all, as he correctly said, this application isn't subject to 120-day clock. It's also not subject to completeness review. Completeness review is designed to tell you when the 120-day clock begins. If you have an application that's not subject to 120-day clock, really not all that concerned about completeness. But I think his larger point was somehow he thought we hadn't done our, met our evidentiary burden. In fact, we have. If you look through the evidence that came in after your last hearing, there's more than ample evidence and findings to show that we meet the approval criteria, and we'll provide some additional findings based on existing evidence and final written argument. He also noted, and I wanted to spell this, he said, "Well, some goals can be applied to permits. Very limited circumstances." ORS 197646 says you can apply goals to permit applications when you're making a permit based on an unacknowledged plan and zoning map application. Doesn't happen very often. I've been doing this far too long, and it's happened exactly once where you apply the goals in that setting. But that's not even the question here. We're gonna hopefully get this approved, and if there's an appeal to Luba, get back. You wouldn't see development until after all that had been done, so goals generally in the state of Oregon do not apply to permits. His last point about the wildfire policy, take a look at staff report, page 15. The staff report recites the evidence from the fire district that they have no concerns about fighting fire in this area, and that's the best evidence. That's the professional organization that responds to fire. So that's all we have tonight. We appreciate your listening to us and asking questions. We think the evidence and findings are sufficient for this commission to recommend to the city commission that this application be approved. Now, no one's asked that the evidentiary record be held open because the evidentiary rec, I, planning commission closes, public hearing closes the evidentiary record to all other parties, then we want the opportunity to submit final written argument. Mr. Kidwell, it's one week period. It would be until the 18th at 5:00 PM, and that's without new evidence. It's simply the applicant's ability to sum up and, sum up the approval criteria, and that's what final written argument does. So, that's how we'll end it tonight, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. So we'll close the public hearing portion of our...
So we're looking at, excuse me?
Yes.
Okay. So we're looking at now, continuing the hearing from here for a deliberation at a later meeting that will be on?
25th.
January 25th.
Okay, just don't let anything else get on there besides those two, those two things.
You said that a lot, just one about Beaver Creek.
No, no, no. I can handle two things. Three things like, that are huge like this, no, that's, that's not...
We have to stay up here.
Excuse me. When you make a motion for a continuance, you'll want to include a statement that the applicant shall be authorized an opportunity to submit final written argument only. No new evidence will be submitted. It will be received by Laura by 5:00 PM on January 18th. Does that work for you, Laura?
Yes.
Ms. Fabulous Assistant City Attorney, we had a request that if we continue it, that we keep the record open. We don't have to consider that, but it was made.
Records have been closed.
But it wasn't, it wasn't a request to leave the record open. It was a statement that if the, if the planning commission was inclined to leave the, to continue the proceeding...
To continue, right.
We're not continuing proceeding if we just continue for deliberation.
Okay, I just want to be clear because I want to make sure that I heard what I thought I heard you say.
He won't make that distinction.
And the, the reality, Commissioner McGriff, is that there's gonna be a hearing before the city commission, too.
Sure, absolutely.
So, all parties are gonna have an opportunity to argue further.
So, based on what we just heard from Ms. Richter?
I don't want to make a motion yet because I have a request of staff.
Okay, what's your request?
My request of staff is that since the applicant requires, is required to, to have the burden of proof, I would appreciate getting a copy of his findings that he said that he gave to the city, and that is because I think it's prudent for me as a commissioner to read the applicant's submittal in total.
That'll be in final written argument, though, won't it?
Before I read your report, which may or may not incorporate their findings, but I want to see what they say before I go back to the city's staff report so that I can properly evaluate it. And I don't feel, and including the thing that's dated the 11th in here, I, I didn't have a chance to read that. So I want to read their stuff, so in my mind, that I make sure that I've read it all and I can make a decision based on the information. And he referred to it several times, but I don't have that.
It is in the record, should I?
Is it?
Well, it, it isn't in this packet of material that we received.
Or I handed it to the planning commission if I did not, Mr. Hurley.
Laura, can you include that?
Yes.
What goes out next Monday?
I just looked at all the stuff that we got in our piles, and I don't see that in the pile, but if it's here, I'll take it home with me. I'll be happy to, to look again.
We'll make sure that everyone gets a copy. We'll include everything in the agenda for next hearing.
Can I give you this back so that this can be sent to Damon? Because that's his stuff that was sitting there.
I'd like to motion to continue this to a date certain of January 25th.
For the purpose of deliberation.
For the purpose of deliberation.
It's the 18th, isn't it?
Nope, and giving the opportunity for the applicant to provide a final written statement due the 18th by 5:00 PM.
Second.
Final written argument.
Final written argument.
Second to everything.
You can just copy paste Carrie's statement, what she said.
All right. Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Askey?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Guile?
You got it, aye.
Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
Motion passes?
Thank you.
We can safely adjourn?
Oh, no, we want to hear about things going on around town.
Happy Tuesday morning! Okay, so, if there's no objection, we adjourn.
Move to adjourn.